Well, good evening. Buenas tardes. And welcome to our special presentations for today, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, here in the city of Moreno Valley. Today, we have three special presentations. And we're going to start off with the proclamation recognizing Women's History Month, which will be presented by Mayor Pro Tem, Sheila Linda Bernard. And I believe she'll be accompanied by Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz as well. Can we give them a big round of applause as they come down?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming to tonight's slate of special presentations. We have some amazing individuals with us tonight, so I hope you guys brought enough applause for everyone because we have a packed house. So, women throughout this great generation's, this great nation's history, have been symbols of freedom, perseverance, and determination. So, in the month of March, it is only appropriate to recognize it as National Women's Month. In that same aspect, I'd like everyone to reflect on women in their own lives that have shown these qualities, whether it be our mothers, sisters, aunts, or colleagues. Join us, joining us tonight for this presentation are a few ladies from our local community that are also, that also carry those values and advocate for our community betterment as a group, and that would be the Edgemont Women's Club. Joining us up here right now would be Dr. Mary McBean and her organization. Please come up here to accept this proclamation. During Women's History Month, we celebrate the courageous women who have helped our nation build a fair and more just society. Whereas, women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our community in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And women play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life, and particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our city. Women have served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and the struggles and successes of all women are interconnected. When opportunities for women are withheld, we all suffer. And when women's lives are improved, we all gain. We celebrate the women of Moreno Valley and around the world who have fought for equality, justice, and opportunity in our democratic society. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby recognize March, two thousand and twenty-four as Women's History Month, and encourages all citizens to observe this month and celebrate the women in their lives. And with that, Dr. McBean, do you have any words?
Good afternoon, everybody. Excuse me, I'm just getting over a cold. Let me introduce my colleague. This is Bunsetta Beeling, and we are part of the Edgemont Women's Club here in Moreno Valley. On behalf of the club, we want to thank you guys for this opportunity. We appreciate it very much, and this is going to hang in our lobby with the other one we got before. We thank you very much.
It's an honor to be part of the Women's Club and all the things that I haven't accomplished doing it. And we do need other members, so if you decide to come and join us, you're always invited to come and join us in our meetings. Thank you.
I told the fire chief this would be a perfect time for a fire drill. And he said, no. He said, actually, you want to know what he said? They said you guys were tough. You don't look so tough. So, I'm going to either have my back to the audience or to the students. And for right now, I'm going to have it to the students, and then I'll come back to them. So, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, and more importantly, our incredible Canyon Springs High School boys and girls wrestling teams, good evening. What a joy it is to be here tonight. We've gathered here to celebrate something truly special. The amazing spirit, the unwavering dedication, and the remarkable achievements of our student athletes here in the city of Moreno Valley, and more specifically Canyon Springs High School. Now, being a high school athlete is no easy feat. It requires balancing books, writing essays, and sometimes, for these athletes, elbow drops and even some body slams. But these young men and women have shown us that nothing is impossible when you have passion and perseverance running through your veins, as these student athletes do. So, let's give them a huge round of applause for our Canyon Springs Boys and Girls Wrestling Teams. Now, this is where I'm going to have my back to you guys. First of all, to our phenomenal Lady Cougars, you have exemplified grace, strength, and the tenacity throughout this season. From dominating your matches to clinching the Ivy League Championship against Paloma Valley, each one of you contributed to your success and left us all in awe. And Miss Autumn Gould, ending a match in a lightning-fast eleven seconds, wow. Now, that's fast, and that's what I call a knockout performance. Where are you, Miss Gould? Okay, smile, please. There you go. Let's hear it for our Lady Cougars. And to our mighty Boys Team, young men, sorry. Your determination and drive has been nothing short of inspiring. From that nail-biting victory against Paloma Valley to the stellar showing at the Masters Meet, you've proven that the sky's the limit for each one of you. And Mr. Xavier Monzo, where you at, Xavier? Smile, brother, look. Your leadership on and off the mat has been instrumental in all of your success. So, let's hear it for our Canyon Springs Young Men Wrestling Team. Oh, wait, there's more. Let's not forget about our state champion, Mr. Sunny Kling. Where you at, Sunny? Sunny's not here? Okay, well, you guys all congratulate him. He has shown us what true grit looks like. His unwavering dedication to the sport has paid off, culminating in yet another CIF championship for Canyon Springs. His community, our community, stands in awe of his achievements, and we can't wait to see what the future holds for him. Remember his community, remember to tell him that his community stands behind him. Let's hear it for Mr. Sunny Kling. And before we wrap up, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to our coaches, mentors, families, and supporters who have stood by our student athletes every step of the way. Your guidance and encouragement have been invaluable, and we are eternally grateful for your unwavering support and dedication to these athletes. And finally, to our student athletes, this is a great achievement in your young lives. So, if you maintain a desire to be the best versions of yourself individually, you will certainly be the best when you have to work as a team, whether it be in a career, a marriage, raising children, or another team sport. You are most likely, you will most likely make whatever you choose better. Never waver or let someone tell you you can't do something. Prove them wrong and shoot for the moon, because if you miss, the worst that can happen is you'll hit a star. Congratulations to each and every one of you. Thank you Canyon Springs Boys and Girls Wrestling Teams. Now, I don't know if the principal wants to choose someone, or you want to come up and say a few words about your teams? Come on up, sir.
Good morning to the Moreno Valley community, or I'm sorry, good morning. It's been a day, right? Good evening to the Moreno Valley community. I want to say I'm the proud principal at Canyon Springs High School. My name is Shawn Roberson, and I've actually been at Canyon Springs now. I'm in my twelfth year there at the school. And seeing what these student athletes, and I, and I think Mr. Delgado hit, hit it right when he said student athletes. These student athletes are doing it in the classroom, not just on the mat. And that's, we are so proud of them because our Boys Team carries a three-point-one GPA, and our Girls Team carries a three-point-four GPA. So, we got to give it up for these, for these student athletes. And, and again, they are bringing championships home to Canyon Springs and Moreno Valley. And so, we are so excited and proud of all of their accomplishments. And I want to give a shout out to Coach Lowe. He's only our third coach in the school's history, wrestling coach in the school's history. So, again, a deep program, and we are so proud to have him a part of our staff and, and involved in these students' lives.
Take some pictures.
There we go. Well, good evening and buenas tardes once again. And this brings us now to our third and final special presentation for today. And as you see here behind me, this pristine group of athletes, young athletes, that are representing the city of Moreno Valley, just like Canyon Springs High School, that are putting Moreno Valley on the map and bringing home trophies in the process. As you can see, they're probably holding one here, and they have their medals around their neck as well. And to close out the special presentations for today, I want to take a moment to shine a spotlight on this team that is standing here behind me. And again, some of our young athletes who are not only excelling out on the field, in this case with soccer, but they're also exemplifying determination and discipline off the pitch as well. Their dedication serves as a beacon, illuminating the path to future success and leadership, just like that M-Mountain that shines our way home every single day. Tonight, I'm thrilled to introduce and command, commend the remarkable achievements of the Inland United Nine and Under Team, who recently clinched victory at the prestigious Cal Souths Nine-U State Championship. Can we give them a big round of applause? The journey to triumph began on February third of this year with the Cal Souths Two Thousand and Twenty-four State Cup spanning over two weekends. Throughout the tournament, Inland United scored a total of ten goals against four teams that they played, while only allowing five goals. Their on-field dominance would persevere in the championship game of the tournament, where they would win three to two facing the Tigres of San Diego. Three to two. I'm sure that was a nail-biter, but they came out with the victory. And in recognition of their outstanding achievement, it's my honor to present each member of the team with certificates of recognition that we'll hand out in just a moment. And also, I want to invite, actually, before I do invite the coach to say a few words, I also want to mention that they recently, I think just yesterday, were invited to go play in Spain to represent the city of Moreno Valley as well. If I could ask for one favor, if you meet Messi, please get me an autograph, please. But with that, I want to turn to Coach Juan or Miguel. If you'd like to say a few words, Coach Eric, can we give Coach Eric a big round of applause, please?
I wasn't ready for this, but, yeah, these kids, man. We took over last year around February, and we were able to turn things around. I knew they all had potential. I just didn't know it was going to come this quick. To the parents, I want to thank every single one of you because, I mean, without you guys' commitment to the program, this wouldn't have happened. And I think it's, it's, to me, it's an honor because all these kids are from Moreno Valley. You know what I mean? And we started with the same kids from February, and we did not have to get any other kids to get the team stronger. We just worked with what we had. And yes, we did get invited to Spain to compete against academies in Spain because of how well the boys are doing. We will be holding fundraisers to get us there, probably every two weeks or so. So, you know, if you guys are in Instagram and the Moreno Valley pages or, or on the Facebook Moreno Valley pages, you guys will see our fundraisers there. It'll be in March of two thousand and twenty-five, around spring break time, so the boys could still go to school and not miss school. That was very important for us. But overall, I just want to thank you guys, thank you the community, and just for the recognition for the boys. I know it means a lot to them. They've been looking forward to this. So, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you so much, Coach. And I see Coach Manuel, I don't know if you're, you're being too humble. If you'd like to join us, please, because he's also part of that leadership that is pushing the team forward and making things happen. And I also want to give a shout out to the parents, all the parents who are here, the families that make this possible for all the hard work that you put in to take your children to, to practice, to make sure they get there on time, to make sure that they have, you know, whatever they need to be able to bring home trophies like this. And now to send them off to Spain, and as you heard, it takes a village, right? So, we got to make sure that we're assisting and helping out however we can.
Good to see you, Coach. Good to see you.
Yeah, so with that, we'll take a nice group picture with the council, and we'll go ahead and conclude the special presentations. One more big round of applause for the board. All right, and with that, we'll go ahead and conclude our special presentations for today. Thank you again so much for joining us. Thank you for everything that you do to make our community as strong as it is today, and it only gets better from here. So, we thank you once again for joining us this afternoon, and we welcome you back here to City Hall anytime. Thank you so much.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City as Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, Board of Library Trustees, and the Moreno Valley Community Foundation Board of Directors. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order at six oh two P M. We'll, we will go ahead and move into the pledge of allegiance. Would anyone like to volunteer to lead us in the pledge? Okay, the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Ed Delgado. And please remain standing for the invocation given by Pastor Donnie Wilson from Lighthouse Baptist Church.
Please join me in my placing your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and freedom.
Good evening, Pastor.
Glad to be here. Let's go ahead and pray. Dear Heavenly Father, I come before you this evening, just truly grateful for all that you're doing in Moreno Valley. Truly, you are Lord and Lord of my life, Lord of creation and Lord of this city, nation, and world. Truly, as your word says, all power is given unto you in heaven and in earth. We acknowledge your power and humbly invoke your presence here today. Lord, we thank you for the gifts you have given each of us, life, health, wisdom. We ask that you would help us to use them for righteousness. We thank you for your grace and mercy upon each home, each work, each individual in this city, and the grace and mercy you've put upon this place. Lord, we thank you for your blessings of growth and stability. Lord, in an uncertain world, we thank you for your patience and protection. Lord, we ask for your wisdom upon this council, upon this leadership. Lord, might they use it for good and not for evil, might they wield it in a righteous way. We thank you, in Jesus' wonderful name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Once again, Pastor Donnie Wilson from Lighthouse Baptist Church. Appreciate you joining us today. That brings us next to item D, which is a roll call. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Delgado.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Marcus.
Here.
Mayor Protem Bernard.
Here.
And Mayor Cabrera.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item is E, motions to excuse. Seeing as we are all present, we'll go ahead and move to the next item, which is item F, staff introductions, please.
Jane Halsted, City Clerk.
Heidi Rodriguez, Senior Deputy City Clerk.
Stephen Katadia, City Attorney.
Mike Lee, City Manager.
Brian Mohan, Assistant City Manager over Administration.
Sean Kelleher, Acting Assistant City Manager Development Services.
Lana Jimenez, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Melissa Walker, Director of Public Works.
Jeremy Bubnik, Parks and Community Services Director.
Robert Cardenas, Human Resources Director.
Rusez Sparza, Economic and Development and Housing Department.
Ken Reichel, Chief Police.
Jeff Burrow, Battalion Chief.
Thank you very much, staff. It's always a pleasure to be here in the chamber with you all. Next is item H, which is public comments on matters, oh, excuse me, item G. And before we actually move in to make any motions, I've received a request. We have some letters, and I believe staff would like to share a few words before we move into the next part of that item.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. As part of G, approval of order of the agenda, it has come to the CMs and the City Attorney's Office knowledge that there might be a need to take action on an item that will, the deadline is prior to the next council meeting. And therefore, the need for action is under an urgency matter. This came to our attention today around twelve fifteen. We received an email from Riverside County Flood Control asking for letters of support of a particular project that will have regional benefit to our area and specifically the city of Moreno Valley. And if they, the letters of support are provided by the city, then they would be more successful in obtaining the grant. And therefore, what I'm looking for is a vote of the council. In order to put something on as an urgency matter, I need a four fifths of the vote. So at this particular point in time, based on the knowledge that you have and that I have given you and the packets that you received, I'm looking for a vote of each of you to determine whether or not we can actually hear this item.
Then again, it's based on the determination that this item came to the council's attention after the posting the agenda, and we need to take immediate action before the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you very much, Brian, and Mr. City Attorney. So with that, at this time, I'll entertain a motion and a second by the council.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second to do as Assistant City Manager Mohan just stated. Madam Clerk, if we could call for a voice vote, and if we could vote on the screen as well, please.
Okay. Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bernard.
Yes.
And Mayor Cabrera.
Yes. That motion carries unanimously. And just for a point of clarification, at what point are we taking this item up on the agenda?
With barring a determination from the city attorney, could we take this item up right now? Okay. What I'm.
Both of the agenda right now, so, yes.
Yes. So with the approval of the agenda, the urgency item, in what, in essence, what I'm looking for is just, as you have already determined, that it is an urgent, an urgent matter, or under the urgency governmental code. All I'm looking for is that I have consensus that the project is deemed urgent, and we can go ahead and submit letterhead, letters to Riverside County Flood Control. And the mayor will be signing those particular letters.
Thank you, Brian. Would you like us to take formal action via a vote?
Please.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve staff's recommendations.
Question.
Yes.
So we'll be transparent. Is this also public? For the public to see before we take a vote or not?
Yes, and just for clarification, I think we need to treat this as a normal agenda item now that it has been added. So just for the public's clarification, our typical procedure for agenda items is that we take council questions of staff, followed by public comment, followed by deliberation if desired, followed by a vote if desired.
I will defer to the city attorney based on the question from Councilmember Marquez and your comments.
You are correct, Mr. Mayor. Okay.
Okay. Are there any further questions from the dais?
Could you read the letter? It's the same letter for the four entities, but just to, you know.
Yeah, we want the public to transparency, let the public know what we're, we're talking about.
Yeah, I can take it if you'd like, or anyone, okay. So the letter that we received here was, is dated actually today, Tuesday, March nineteenth at two thirty-four P M.
The letters that you're going to be signing.
Yes. So it was via email, and attached were a few letters, but I want to read. Let me get to the letter here, just one second. Yes, and this is for the Cactus Channel, which is the flood control channel that is located off of Cactus Boulevard along March Air Reserve Base. And we have a letter here that I'll read verbatim into the public record from a few individuals, but I'll read the one addressed from our congressman.
Yeah, for point of clarification, there, there are going to be letters from you to Senator Butler, Senator Padilla, House Representative Tocano, House Representative Calvert, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. So before I read the actual text of the letter, again, just want to mention what the project, what, what this is about, and it's about the Cactus Channel and us potentially, well, applying, submitting letters of support for an application to hopefully, best case scenario, receive funding from the federal government to aid in funding the construction of the Cactus Channel. So this is a letter of support from the city of Moreno Valley, and the letter reads as follows. Dear Congressman Tocano, on behalf of the Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District and our communities, I am writing to ask for your support of language in the fiscal year 2025 Interior, Environment, and Related Agencies Appropriations Bill that will allow the USDA to grant RCFC and WCD a permanent easement for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the Cactus Channel project. The one point five mile Cactus Channel project will construct an underground reinforced concrete box in the city of Moreno Valley that will provide a hundred year flood protection to the March Air Reserve Base and surrounding areas, including the aforementioned USDA Forest Service property. Past flooding events have impacted March Air Reserve Base operations and threatened damage to mission critical equipment. This project will address those problems and provide flood protection for the runway, further facilitating and enabling the future arrival and mission of the KC forty six Pegasus aircraft. This project is a collaborative partnership between the March Joint Powers Authority, March Air Reserve Base, city of Moreno Valley, and RCFC and WCD. The project provides national benefits by further enabling the US Air Force's March Air Reserve Base to serve as a critical component of our national defense. March Air Reserve Base is home to the four fifty-second Air Mobility Wing, and over eight thousand people from all branches of the military are assigned to the base. Additional flood protection will allow these units to pursue their missions more effectively, both during and after major storm events. To construct, operate, and maintain the Cactus Channel project, RCFC and WCD needs a permanent exclusive easement across the northern fifty-six feet of the USDA Forest Service property. The language is currently being prepared, however, following is draft language for your reference, and that reads as follows. The Secretary of Agriculture shall grant an easement in perpetuity to the Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District on certain national forest system lands located in the county of Riverside, California for the purposes of and relating to construction, inspection, operation, and maintenance of segment two of the Sunnymead Cactus Avenue Channel, known as Cactus Channel Project. We ask for your strong support of the language for the Cactus Channel project so that it may be included in the fiscal year 2025 Interior, Environment, and Related Agencies Appropriations Bill. Your backing would mean a tremendous amount to our community. Thank you for your support and your consideration of our request, very truly yours, signed by the city of Moreno Valley. So that is the text of the letter, that if approved, would be sent off to the federal government and would be included in the application, as has been stated. Before we entertain a motion, are there any further comments, before actually we move into public comment?
There are no public comments, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So with that, we'll go ahead and move into council deliberation if desired. Would any council members like to make any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve staff's recommendations.
Like, one, just one thing.
Yes, Councilmember Marquez.
Under the, the, the information that we received a short while ago, I just want the residents to know on this project what the cost will be. US Air Force, one point nine million. Lewis Group, five point one million. USDA, three four, three point four million. March One, MJPA, six point one million. RCFC and WCD, nine million. And the city of Moreno Valley, half a million. That's the projective cost for this Cactus project. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And so with that, I think we still need a motion and a second. Oh, Councilmember Delgado.
Yeah, I just want to let everybody know that we've been working on this project for the last two and a half years with our legislatures down in Washington, DC, and we plan on bringing it back to DC in April. That's how important this is to the city of Moreno Valley. So we will be garnering their support in DC as well. So this is a great thing for us. So thank you.
Absolutely, and as the council member said, this is something that's been in the works for years, and it is a collaborative effort, and usually this doesn't happen, but as we've stated, it's an urgency matter because of deadlines that we have to meet and make sure that we submit these letters of support in time. And best case scenario, we will receive some funding from the federal government to improve that Cactus Channel. And this is for the portion, just to put it into perspective, from about Heacock Street, the corner of Cactus and Heacock, through to, I believe that's Ellsworth, almost to Ellsworth, along Cactus Boulevard. So just to put that into perspective, but are there any further comments from the dais? I don't see any, and I believe we still need a motion and a second.
It was already on there. There's already motion on there.
Okay, okay. I was volunteered as the mover, so a motion by me, a second by Councilman Marquez. And if we could call for a voice vote, please.
Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bernard.
Yes.
And Mayor Cabrera.
Yes. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. So now we'll go back to the normal order of item G, which is approval of the order of the agenda, if we still need to do that, or if we've already done that via motion.
You would still have to do it via motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. If we could call for a vote.
Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bernard.
Yes.
And Mayor Cabrera.
Yes. So the order of the agenda is approved unanimously. And if we could hit our buttons on the screen as well. Thank you very much. So next is item H, which is public comments on matters not on the agenda. Now we get back into the normal rhythm of things here. Thank you for bearing with us. Please be advised that today we actually don't have our translators here, but if you still need translation, please let us know, and we'll make sure to get you some translation. And before we move on to public comments, I want to remind everyone to direct their comments to the city council. And for comments on items on tonight's agenda, each speaker will have a total of three minutes to comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to comment on non-agenda items?
Yes, we do, Mayor. I'll call out the first three. First three are Fabian Ayub, Priscilla Ayub, and Julianne Pedrosa.
Good evening.
Good evening, guys. My name is Fabian Ayub, my beautiful wife right here, Priscilla. We both wrote our names because our speech is a little bit long. So we're here again to bring awareness to Down Syndrome Day, which will be on Thursday. So we posted some stuff. We came last week, brought some cookies. I don't know who got the cookies or not. We brought some cookies. I don't know who got the cookies or not. So I hope you liked the cookies. Whoever reposted us on our Instagram, you guys got gifts, so. Ms. Bernard, you reposted us. Thank you so much. We got something for you, and then, of course, that's it, right? Yeah, and then we also got pens for everyone. This one's for Ms. Bernard? Okay. And then this one is for our mayor that you reposted us. Thank you so much. So I don't know how to give this to you guys. There was a gentleman here. So we're going to give it to him?
Our staff will make sure to get that in.
So he's going to give us, so make sure you get it, because there are a lot of goodies here for you guys. And then, sorry. And then also for the, for the public, we also have, so they don't feel left alone. We've made these goodie bags for our schools our daughters are going to. So 500, 500 students, so we hand wrapped 500 of these. We made some shirts for our, for teachers as well, those schools, so they'll be wearing that on Thursday as well. But the reason we're here for is because we, all of you guys, have made our life so much easier. So I want to thank all of you, and all of you, and of course, our warriors right here. For past eight years, I see a battle between you guys. But that battle is amazing, because I witnessed Mr. Marquez gets beat up all the time, but he gets up again, he shakes it up. He's just going at it. And of course, all of you guys are warriors, and thanks for fighting our war. So the reason we're here is that we have a child with Down Syndrome, of course, Amira Ayub, and she goes to school. She doesn't go to, doesn't go to school in our district. She goes to Valverde. Am I correct? Yes, so she goes to Valverde, and in Valverde, the school district, there's only one classroom, or one school, who is providing education for Down Syndrome, an entire school district. Our school district's good. Moreno Valley, we have, I believe, six schools. Unfortunately, we're on the other side of the track, so we have to go to Valverde. And so we came to bring that to your attention, our warriors, to raise awareness. We need more classrooms for our Down Syndrome children. Continue?
I will yield my time. You go ahead.
So may I use her time?
Finish it up.
Thank you. So we're here to ask you guys to, to to ask for more classrooms. But I'm not sure how to do that, just to come to our venue, to you guys, so you can raise the voice, raise awareness, talk to anybody, guide us who to talk to, and have more classroom in all districts. I know our district's doing good on this side, but unfortunately, we can't send Amira to this district due to the fact that we have to go to that district. Our drive time, we drove today, plus two accidents to just visit that school, was 45 minutes, one way. To drop off Amira, who is four years old, by the way, at 7:15 AM, we have two other daughters that they go to school, I believe, one of your daughters. We have to bring them back at 8:15. So we're driving, we're coming back, and then by then, we have to go pick her up. Then what time do we have to wake up for our daughters to get ready and for them to get ready for school? It's just, we couldn't, we couldn't even fathom to fit that in our schedule. So today, when we went in front of their board, because they had to evaluate our daughter, and we brought that up, and they're like, "Well, so..." And then the other things that they said, that, "Well, we have a bus. You can bring her and put her on a bus." My daughter is four years old, in a school bus. She has a Down Syndrome. She's not verbal. So it was just, it was just a hard day for us, but we're fighters. We'll fight it. We brought it to your attention. We bring it to the public attention to know that, that there are not enough room for children with Down Syndrome in some of our communities here, in our school districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Julianne Pedrosa, Joe Teague, and Carla Sankey.
Good evening. This is Julianne Pedrosa, Building Up Lives Foundation. I'm going to kind of piggyback on what he said, in a way. You know, we need more services. I deal with the homeless. And the things that I saw this week were, there's a lot of miscommunication. There's a lot of not connecting the dots, and I have to tell you, on the floor, the $35,000 that you gave to Build Up Lives allows me to know that the building is being paid for, the rent, the lease, the bills, and now I don't have to fundraise to make the basic bills, and I could be on the streets. I was literally in a hospital with a homeless man that should never, we failed him. We failed him so bad, you guys. He is six foot four, 100 pounds. There's no fat. There's no muscle in this man. He's sleeping on the streets. Are you kidding me? He's been, he's violently vomiting. He had surgery yesterday. And so Leanne here, Leanne, she might be familiar with you guys, Early's Reptile and Small Critter Rescue. They step in every time we have a pet that needs to be fostered or taken care of, because a lot of these boarding cares, a lot of these homes placements out here don't take care of them. They do. And get them on their feet and bring them back with Sparky. This is Sparky that we got. And so there's a lot of dots that are missing, a lot of dots. I was in the ER, 13, altogether, 13 and a half hours, one day. They released him. He's vomiting every 15 minutes. He weighs 100 pounds, six foot four. Every 15 minutes, he could choke, he could die, he passes out. Are you kidding me? Okay, so we have to get him a place to sleep. I have, I get a hotel room, thank you for the funding, and I got to leave a man who's vomiting in a room by himself? Because there's no resources? Are you kidding me? And we saw social workers. We saw about seven different ones. Homeless advocate, we saw all kinds of things. There's answers and solutions, but we're not putting it in gear on the bottom floor. This man, for seven years, needed medical help. This man, for seven years, has been struggling, and how many of us seen him, and we missed the ball? Now, we missed the ball. Again, they just released him after surgery to the bus. They told him, "We got cold weather facilities for you and the clothes closet." Are you kidding me? He needs boarding care. He needs, because in a matter of a week, the esophagus is going to go back to closed, and he's going to start vomiting again. So a week, two weeks, whatever. So this is a man that wants to work. He wants to get on his feet. Why are we not doing that? Why are we reusing resources like the hospital nurses and doctors repeatedly for an issue that could be done once? So we got to connect the dots. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Joe Teague, Kayla Sankey, and Bob Palomeros.
Yes, sir. Joe Teague.
I'd like to address all the members here. I'm proud to be an American, but right now, I'm not so proud to be a citizen of Moreno Valley. I have called the police many times, and they have never shown up when you ask them to. I've had burglaries lately, in the last month or so, to the tune of 500-plus thousands of dollars. I had an old bank safe. It was a double-wide safe. It was full of gold, coins, rifles, pistols. Then I had another safe. It was a single safe. I think it held about 36 rifles, plus a lot of money in it. And then I had a little office safe. That has all been stolen, and we could have recovered that had the police have responded when I called them. I called them up, and they said it'd be right out. I said, "They're getting away with my stuff. They are along the flood control that adjoins my property." No response, no response. Then here a while back, I called them up again. They're back again, after me and a couple of neighbors went over with baseball bats and pipes and chased them out. You can ask my wife, I was beating one of them over the head. He was claiming my stuff was his with my name on it. Anyway, I'd like to tell the city that I have to take legal action against you to try to recover some of the things that you could have recovered had you have taken care of this. Now the homeless have moved back in there again. I called up a little over a week ago. They said it sends somebody out. There hadn't been anybody out, so then I called up two or three more times. And the last time I called up was several days ago. Still no response, but they're getting more of them in there. And what did they do? They used the flood control for toilet. They use it to dump all their trash. And they had a lot of my musical instruments, valuables, down in the water during that rain. And it all goes to Lake Elsinore, polluting their lake. There's something that has to be done about it. And then code compliance, the burglars have made a mess of my property. And I got written up here a while back, you know, I got trash cans. Well, a lot of my trash cans aren't trash cans. I've got a lot of containers. I keep a lot of toys in them, garden tools, anything else, especially toys. I got my daughter here. I've got, I think, 20 grandkids, great-grandkids, and grandkids.
Mr. Teague, thank you very much, sir. The three minutes is up, but we'll make sure to get your contact information. Yes, sir. We'll make sure to get your contact information, so we can follow up. We'll make sure to get your contact information. We have someone ready to speak with you. Thank you for coming out today, sir.
The next two speakers are Kayla Sankey and Bob Palomeros.
Hello, my name is Kayla Sankey. I'm here, and I'm representing Texas Roadhouse today. We'd like to thank you for welcoming us into your city. We opened on January 30th, and we had a great ribbon-cutting ceremony, and I know a lot of you dine all the time. Our mayor being one of the ones that dines very often with us, so we'd like to thank the city. I am here because we'd like to ask for a little help with our homeless situation as well. We have lots of, we've had several break-ins to employee vehicles and property stolen. We do our walks around the building every day, and even just today, we had a homeless person there, and we had to clean up bodily fluids because they slept out on the bench and just used the restroom there, and that's a regular occurrence for us. We have lots of young ladies and young people, just people in general, that kind of don't feel safe walking to their cars and that kind of thing at night. We just like to ask for a little more, maybe, police presence or regular visits in the parking lot and the areas that we service. We'd like to continue to do our business here in Moreno Valley. We love the city, and we're just asking for that help with the homeless population. We'd like to see them get in beds and do everything that they need to do to be successful, because they are people just like us, and we are here to offer any help that we can to facilitate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bob Palomeros.
Good evening. First of all, I always like to salute our first responders. What Julianne was saying about the gentleman that was in the hospital, it sounds to me like he's entitled to some kind of rehabilitation or social security or something. If there's social workers involved, they should have looked into it. I mean, I wanted to touch a little bit on K2, though, about what it might cost us. That's quite a bit of money. I'm wondering why we've never brought it to study sessions. They're putting it out here, and no one has even spoken about it. We know the AdHoc Committee.
Mr. President, just, this is for non-agenda items, just as a brief reminder.
Then, non-agenda, I can speak on anything, right?
For items that are not on the agenda.
I'm just saying that, this is what I'm going to speak on. I can speak on, you better start my time over. My time? You interrupted me.
You can go right ahead. We can give them.
Anyway, it's kind of concerning what you want to do with this homeless charter. I mean, no study sessions, nothing. You're just putting it out there. You know, there's a home key, a room key, actually, in Los Angeles that had 30 beds, and now they're getting sued because there's a nonprofit right next door to it that was helping kids with arts and music, and they had 88 children there. And out of the 88, right now, there's only about like five of them, because what was happening was, all of the people from that room key that are in that program, drug-using, you know, urinating. The parents were bringing those kids to those arts and music lessons, and seeing this stuff, no way. So they pulled their kids up. Now, that room key program is getting sued, or the City of Los Angeles is, because that's theirs, you know, they get somebody to run it. And also, the nonprofit next door is suing them. So, you know, this, I mean, we spend, and here, what we're doing here in Moreno Valley, or what we want to do is we have 77 homeless, I believe that might be the count. Out of those 77, how many do you think are going to qualify for the program that they're proposing? How many are mentally challenged that aren't going to qualify? How many are drug-addicted that aren't going to want to participate? So we might have 10. So to fill the rest of the beds, depending on how many you want, you're going to have people from the outside coming in to try to take them. You know, this is a bad deal here. We've got 19,603 senior citizens. We gave them $6 million, which is nice, to rehab that senior citizen facility center. They're the ones that need the help, the 19,000. You know, every year, it's increasing. The only one that has spoken, that I've heard the most about the homeless here, and, you know, trying to keep it in line, is Mr. Marquez. You know, he's always stepped up and said, "Hey, you know, we we know it's not, you know, it isn't against the law to be homeless, but we've got to have some kind of control." And if you're just going to throw money at a problem, you know, the only ones that benefit, believe me, from these billions of dollars that have been spent are the people that provide the services. There it is. That's plain and simple. Drive down the street. They're still there, and we spent billions. Thank you.
The next speaker is Roy Blackard.
The great cartoonist Scott Adams had a Dilbert rendition. Dilbert asked the evil dogbert, "How are all the tech calls going?" The evil dogbert answered, "Great. I'm blaming everything on climate change, and the people are totally buying it." Dilbert asked, "That doesn't make any sense." The evil dogbert responded, "You would be surprised how much that really matters." That is our government to a T. You started off reading the letter. Funding is not from the federal government. The funding came from us. I have asked you to start every question off. You don't have to ask what agency it came from. The money came from us. You are just the dispersers of it. You cannot deal honestly with anything. You failed, Joe Teague. You failed the people that really needed help. We did Obamacare. We're supposed to fix all this. Look at the county budget, $6.8 billion. Almost 27 million of it's going to the Riverside University Health System, 30% of the budget, and our health system gets worse. It's costing us three times more for half the care. Try and get regular healthcare or normal procedures like you used to get within a week. Now it takes six months or a year. This is exactly what that cartoon was talking about, and this is why this agency fails. You don't even have an overhead projector here like I could put the cartoon up like I did at the county this morning. But you'll go to the California League of Cities and brag about, "Oh, yeah, I can point a gun at these dummies out here, and I can have a great vacation while we're hosing you." while we're hosing you. The problem here, most of you, for the majority of your life or your working life, you work for the government. You have government employees that gave you a study session on the economics. You know what? California is last in job creation. We didn't do that, ninety-three was the last time we worked. We're behind the District of Criminals, who is number fifty. You proud of that? Every decision you're making, and the problem is, and I'm talking to you three in the middle and you guys down in the well, the problem here is the men have no balls to go out and tell what needs to be done. And until we do that, we're not fixing anything. Stand up. Stand tall and let's fix it.
Okay, the next three speakers are Alma De Leon, and she's a Spanish speaker. And then we have Luis Palomeros and Christopher Baca.
Okay. Si, si, me da un momento, por favor, para traducir. So, I'll say it in English first. Since we don't have our translators today, Ms. Patty Rodriguez has generously volunteered to translate during public comment. And just as a reminder, for when there's translation, we're legally required to give double the amount of time. So instead of three minutes, she gets six minutes. Again, just to allow the speaker enough time to make their comments. So, en español, Patricia va a traducir por usted. Y en vez de tres minutos, usted tiene seis minutos para dar suficiente tiempo para traducir lo que va a decir. So, usted si puede decir unas palabras y esperar un momento cuando ella traduzca. Y pueden hacerlo así.
Claro que sí, buenas tardes a todos. Alma De Leon, soy representante de la fundación Feeding Soul Foundations. Una fundación con fines de caridad. Nos dedicamos... Okay, deja traduzco. So se llama Alma De Leon y está representando, dígame su oficina otra vez.
In English. We usually have a translator, so it's just, please bear with us. Thank you, Patty.
Okay, go ahead.
De nuevo, Alma De Leon, de la fundación Feeding Soul Foundations. Soy la representante de la fundación nonprofit. Nosotros nos dedicamos a dar comida a la gente en condiciones de calle. Este, y algunos artículos de primera necesidad.
So Alma, her name is Alma, she is from a nonprofit organization and she's here to provide information, so she can go ahead and continue.
Sí, gracias. Yo no vengo a juzgar a nadie, el trabajo de nadie. Yo vengo a decirles que hemos estado trabajando con la gente en condiciones de calle. Y efectivamente, se ven las mismas personas todos los días, entonces yo quiero saber.
Okay, I'm not here to judge or make any judgments on anybody, but I'm here to just provide some information to let you guys know.
Eh, nos encontramos cada que nosotros hacemos campañas, nos encontramos con la misma gente. Yo tengo una pregunta. ¿Qué estamos haciendo como ciudad para poder erradicar este tipo de situaciones?
Okay, so she wants to know, what can she do to try to find out what situations are going on right now? So she's going to go ahead and ask a question?
Yo a través de mi fundación quiero ayudar a la ciudad llevándoles la información a la gente que está en condición de calle porque la gente que tiene necesidad de comida tiene otras necesidades al mismo tiempo.
Okay, so she's wanting to let us know that she is helping, providing, I'm going to assume it's homeless, with information that she has and she's providing it to them from her office.
No solo la información, ¿qué recursos la ciudad tiene para aquella gente que es inmigrante? Para aquella gente que solo habla español? Para aquella gente que no tiene un seguro social? ¿Qué condiciones?
And she would like to know, what are the resources that we are providing currently for immigration services? Okay?
Quise hacerme pasar como una persona inmigrante que no tiene casa, que no tiene comida, que no tiene un vehículo. Y acudí al servicio, al Departamento de Servicios Sociales de la Ciudad y me encontré con la sorpresa que no hay nada. No hay nada para la gente inmigrante.
So she, in doing her investigation, she found out that she wasn't able to find any resources available to, for immigration?
Así no vamos a poder combatir ni erradicar el hambre. Así no vamos a poder acabar con la gente que está viviendo en condiciones de calle. Entonces yo me ofrezco, una vez que alguien me pueda dar la información de los servicios sociales que cuenta la ciudad para todo este tipo de gente, transmitirlo a través de mi fundación.
So she would like information or resources that she would be able to provide for the immigration since she hasn't been able to find any of this information within our city?
Y no quiero, no me gustaría que me dijeran, "Vea la página de la ciudad de Moreno Vale", porque ya fui y no hay ningún recurso que aplique para este tipo de personas que son las que están en verdadera necesidad. Yo sé que hay muchas fundaciones que dan comida, pero la dan de siete a nueve o de cinco a seis, entonces...
So she would also like to not be directed to the webpage to be able to obtain information on immigration. She would like, would you contact you, like a little bit more clear direction on this?
Sí, las fundaciones dan, de acuerdo a las condiciones de cada fundación, la gente que está en la calle a veces no tiene un teléfono o no sabe cómo usarlo o no tiene los recursos para poder dirigirse a tal o cual dirección en que está ubicada la fundación que está dando la ayuda. Yo a través de mi fundación estoy yendo a cada una de las personas en condición de calle.
Okay, so she's also letting us know that she has been helping and trying to reach out to these people that are out on the streets with the information that she has available with her foundation?
Yo sé que la ciudad tristemente no tiene un Departamento de Servicios Sociales porque yo, después de ir al Departamento de Servicios Sociales, perdón, sí la tiene, pero no para la gente que realmente está necesitando y que está viviendo en la calle. Yo me dirigi después aquí y fue la misma respuesta. No hay un lugar donde el homeless pueda ir a dormir aquí en la ciudad.
So she really is wanting us to know that the resources are not available to be able to assist the homeless that require immigration services?
No solo gente inmigrante, pues la gente, toda la gente que está en condiciones de calle que tenemos en la ciudad de Moreno Vale, que yo creo que todos ya hemos visto que se reúnen en ciertas partes y siguen estando ahí, pasa el día ahí, llega la primavera y siguen estando ahí, llega el invierno y son las mismas personas y tengo forma de comprobarlo.
So she's able to provide and let us know that, since the services are not available, she knows where these homeless are currently residing?
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias.
The next two speakers are Luis Palomeros, followed by Christopher Baca.
Luis Palomeros, community activist. Wow, it's amazing what's going on in our community and our city. We're on a train wreck, just like they are at the Moreno Valley Unified School District. I heard the two parents come in and talk about their child that has a disability. It's a sin here because at the Moreno Valley Unified School District, if they want to pass another bond, we already had Measure M, that cost us fifty million dollars. Now they want to pass another bond, two hundred, forty million dollars. Don't vote for it. And they say, "Oh, it's for this, police, fire." No, it's a lie. It's not for that. It's for building, new buildings on the campuses. And they already built a lot of new buildings. We still got those hot boxes, those, what are they called, the bungalows? They should get rid of those. But they had built that arts performance center, the one Dr. K wanted there so he can do all his productions and galas and all that. And with that, we could have put a new building on every school and provided services for our students. We have almost close to five thousand students in the district that have autists. And we can't service them. But they want to come with us with another bond? We're going to pay for that bond. We're going to pay for that bond. And they said, "Oh, it's only going to cost you ninety dollars a year on your property tax." Hell no, if your house is worth six hundred thousand, now it's going to be, times that by six. People got to wake up here. And if our school district goes into receivership, all of you board members should be seeing what's going on, the mayor too. Because he's at the schools, you know, doing his presentation and whatever he does. So all of you board members and the mayor should be finding out what's going on in our school district. Because if we go into receivership, there goes the city. They're the largest employer here, but nobody knows what's going on because they're too busy on a freeway commuting. You know, how many voters do we got here? Over fifty thousand? Two hundred and ten, fifteen thousand people? They don't go out, but when they throw this bond on them, wow. They'll be crying, but it's going to be too late. Like this homeless thing that's going to come up in a little bit. Wow, it's going to cost millions and millions of dollars to get it up and running. For how many beds? Thirty-something beds? People are going to come from every damn surrounding city and say, "Oh, they got a shelter there." Thirty, and it's going to cost millions to keep it going every year. Another tax for us to pay for. Well, we're going to put in for grants, but hell no. Find out who the seventy-something is that want help here. And we got the Salvation Army, we got the Mom and Pops here that help out. Come on, and come and you give them something. Julie was saying thirty-five hundred? Oh, wow, up in it. And, you know, she's out there helping. A lot of other people are there helping, the Mom and Pops, hole in the walls out there helping. Why do we got to put this other thing? It's going to be, have you let the people know in Moreno Valley that you want to do this? Mayor Cabrera? Shalinda? What's going on here?
Thank you.
The last speaker is Christopher Baca.
Good evening, council. I'm here on behalf of myself, my comments on my own. I just want to touch up on some of the comments that were made regarding the nonprofits and some of the entities that were here, talking about what their problems as far as the homeless people are concerned, as far as Texas Roadhouse, how they have to continuously hose down the place in the morning because of the people sleeping on there. Then we have some of the nonprofits that have no idea that there's other help going on here. And that just goes to prove that, you know, giving money to nonprofits is really counterproductive because they're really, the majority of the nonprofits, specifically one, and I should point out, Building Up Lives Foundation is a fraud. She's just there to profit herself, make herself enrich with all the stuff she sells and the stuff she ships out. But I ask anybody that's volunteering to double think what you're doing. And she doesn't appreciate that. She can sue me for slander and I'll be more than happy to counter sue. And, but anyhow, the nonprofits are really not the solution. And a lot of the stuff that's going on, for instance, under the freeways, you have all those encampments that the city has their hands tied up. They're tied up. All these other vagrants, the police department, their hands are tied. So the solution is not more money. Not more money, especially for nonprofits that are there to enrich themselves with stuff that's given to them, that they turn around and sell or bribe other people to do work for them. Basically, that's what's going on with, you know, these nonprofits. That goes to prove, the young lady that was here, the Spanish speaking one, she has no idea how much money is being poured into the city. There's billions, millions and millions and millions of dollars through different type of agencies that's being poured in. But what do we have? We have a worse situation. It's getting worse. By the day, we see homeless everywhere, we see the crime, we see the, you know, the use of drugs. You know, I see encampments popping up everywhere. You can't even go through a drive-through, you know, and the people's hands are tied. The solution is not more money. The solution is, you know, helping to get enforcement, you know, to get the people that are mentally ill off the streets, helping to get the drug addicts to services. They don't want it, they're not going to go seek for it. And, you know, those ones that are going to the hospital, you know, if the person knew what they were doing, they could get hospice care for them. They don't release them that way. You know, there's a lot of things they can do, but people don't know what they're doing or they don't care what they're doing and really just have no interest in bettering our city. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes public comment on items not on the agenda.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and thank you to all of our public speakers today. That brings us next to item I, which is the joint consent calendar. And before we continue, I do want to just take a moment to read a script just because there is, there are two items on the joint consent calendar where there is conflict of interest. And I've been advised by our city attorney to read a script that's been provided for us just to clarify that. And the script reads as follows. "Since I own real property located within five hundred feet from both Heritage Park neighborhood projects, I am required to recuse myself from participating in any decisions regarding those projects. This means that I have to recuse myself from discussing the two Heritage Park ordinances which appear on the consent calendar for second reading. However, since the ordinances appear on the consent calendar, I have been informed and advised by the city attorney's office that I am not required to leave the dais, but the minutes should reflect my recusal and the fact that I did not vote on the Heritage Park ordinances." So just for, to put it into layman's terms, at the last council meeting, there were two items that were before the council for a vote. And because I own property within five hundred feet of the projects, I'm legally not allowed to vote on those projects, so I had to recuse myself. At that time, I had to step away and I decided to leave the room so that I did not participate in the discussion and I did not participate in the vote at all to avoid any conflict of interest. And so that is some context to let everybody know what happened and why I'm reading this. Because a vote took place at the last meeting, but it's coming back for a second reading just to finalize it. And for the record, I am on record as recusing myself from those two items, which is item I six on the consent calendar. Before I continue, would any other council members like to make any comments?
Yes. "Since my personal residence, which I own, is located within five hundred feet from both Heritage Park neighborhood projects, I am required to recuse myself from participating in any decisions regarding the projects. This means I have to recuse myself from discussing the two Heritage Park ordinances which appear on the consent calendar for second readings. However, since the ordinances appear on the consent calendar, I have been informed by the city attorney's office that I am not required to leave the dais, but the minutes should reflect my recusal and the fact that I did not vote on the Heritage Park ordinances."
Thank you, Mayor Proton. So before I open the consent calendar for public comment, I will turn to my fellow council members to see if there are any items that you wish to remove from the consent calendar for separate action. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on the consent calendar items?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we'll go ahead and conclude and close the public comment portion for the consent calendar. And this brings us to any council comments if desired. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve staff's recommendations.
I'll make a motion that we approved item I six or consent calendar.
Yeah, the full.
Full consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Voice vote, please.
Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Marcus?
Yes.
It's a three oh.
No, you actually go through the whole consent and you take the whole vote. They have recused himself on just that one item.
Only recuse, okay. Councilmember?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Bernard?
Yes.
And Mayor Cabrera?
Yes. So that passes unanimously. And once again, for the public record, the item I six, both myself and Mayor Proton Bernard are recused from that item. Thank you, council member. This meeting has a lot of curveballs today, but we're getting through it. We're getting through it. Okay, so that brings us to the next item on the agenda. We don't have any items on public hearings. And that brings us to K, which is general business. And we have two items for general business. The first one is K one, review and consider the Art Commission's approval of public art request for funding application by Christopher Papour. Excuse me if I butchered that. Mural at El Potrero Park restroom. And we have a report from Parks and Community Services.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight you will have a presentation from the artist Christopher Papour. He is proposing a four hundred square foot mural on the El Potrero Park restroom, time-lapse video. And to note, he is also going to be providing a community workshop to involve the community in this application. So this is the recommendation from the Arts Commission for your review.
All right, thank you guys for your time this evening. My name is Chris Papor. I am a muralist and filmmaker residing in Los Angeles. I recently led the Youth Cinema Project as a mentor in their after-school program, teaching kids filmmaking, and I'm just gonna breeze by some of these examples of my work here. This is the proposed project mock-up for the El Potrero Park restroom mural. The front here includes some imagery of soccer and football, which is resonating with the local community's passion for sports and the park's activities. And on the sides here, you can see the native flora and fauna, Moreno Valley. I got a lot of these from the Conservation General Plan. And some of the, some of the inspiration came from local landmarks and cultural symbols. The funding request is $20,000 for the mural art workshop, which I'll go into more details about, and time-lapse video of the creation of the art. This is a brief itemized budget allocation for the mural artist fee, materials, the workshop, the preparation. So this is a little more details of the front view, which features the sports motifs there. And this is the side one of the restroom walls, which shows some of the local flora and fauna. If you notice any, there's the mountain lion and the mammoth, I wrote an MV for Moreno Valley. This is the second side of the local flora and fauna featuring the M right there on the Box Springs Mountain, some yucca. And there's various other flora and fauna, but I'll just breeze through this a little bit. So this is a brief schedule there for week one, the planning, preparation, design, week two, progress updates, and upon the completion of the walls that contain the flora and fauna examples, there'll be a workshop that I'll go into details, that would be a two-day workshop led by my coordinator. This is some of my inspiration here. And so, the community engagement piece is very important for this project. We'll be working with Karen Weiss, who is an experienced coordinator and conservationist. She taught in New York City Public Schools and worked with a lot of different nonprofits. She would be working with various community centers and schools nearby the park itself, including El Potrero Preschool, as well as various elementary schools and middle schools nearby. The workshop itself is gonna feature an activity book, different DIY craft sessions, and these are all involving the conservation, and they all reflect the mural itself. And participants will learn about local flora and fauna native to the area for two days, it would be a weekend session, all ages would be invited, but it'd be geared towards more K through eighth grade, eighth grade. And the goal and objective of this mural project is to blend the artistic expression of athletics and nature in the park setting. We will reach out to the local youth groups that utilize the fields as well to create an engaging mural, as well as the workshop experience that educates viewers and also enhances the park experience. And that's it for now, but thank you all for your time and attention this evening.
Thank you very much, and if you could stay there for just a moment in case there's any questions from the city council. So with that, actually, before we move into questions, is there any further presentation from staff? I don't see any, so I'll turn now to my colleagues here on the dais. Are there any questions for, for the artist or for staff? Correct, yeah, we're not in deliberation, this is just for questions.
Said something about a time-lapse video that you were going to show later on, did you talk about that?
Oh, yeah, that would be, it's pretty self-explanatory, it would just be a time-lapse production that I would film myself and edit of the creation of the mural. And also, I would feature some of the workshop highlights in the video as well.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from the dais? Okay, councilmember Delgado.
How are you gonna advertise for community involvement?
Well, we would be utilizing the Moreno Valley Instagram and other social media pages, as well as coordinating with various youth groups that utilize the fields and the nearby schools, and working with the Arts Commission with that as well.
Good, thank you.
Are there any further questions for the artist or for staff? I don't see any, so thank you so much. And what is your name, once again, just wanna make sure I get that right?
Chris Papor.
Chris Papor, thank you so much.
It's a weird last name.
Thank you so much. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and move into public testimony. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We have one request to speak, Roy Blacker.
So as not to practice the definition of insanity, I'm gonna change my tactics a little bit here. $20,000 is not enough. Why don't we triple it? Why don't we give him 60 grand? No, that ain't enough, that's six times 120. No, that ain't enough, let's make the complete number, number nine, let's give the kid 180 grand. This is the absurdity of what's went down here, and what is continuing to go down and what will. You see the shirt, Stand Up Riverside? You know what? They did exactly what the city of Moreno Valley is. We wanna copy that? See how the elections ran? March 5th, it's a little bit of change going on. Maybe a little bit more change going on down the road. So you need to decide which side of the aisle you're gonna be on. You want this? You want Moreno Valley to have a scintilla of respect? Well, we come up here when we put these things together, and this is the plan, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna involve the kids, why didn't you go to the crime syndicate and say, hey, how many, what can we do to make this a project? They do it in Valverde. We hear, eh, then. It's why you see, how many, how many development projects are on the agenda today? Or last time, or the time before, or six months ago, or two years ago? I will submit to you the reason there is almost zero is just what's going on here today. Most, let's say, business people, people looking to invest, ain't looking to do it in a clown show. So again, let's roll it up. If we're gonna, if you wanna practice, just like the almost bankrupt Moreno Valley Unified Crime Syndicate, and I would caution anybody of wanting to send their kids there. But if you wanna bankrupt this city, then like I said, let's do it real good. Let's, let's crash it. Give the kid 180 grand, let's, if we gotta pull money out of the general slush fund, let's get after it. And I know, I realize now why you stacked the meetings last week so we couldn't attend. You all wanted to compensate the cookie supply that the nice lady and gentleman brought up here last week. It is funny, I agree, it's a laugh. We have to laugh, Shalinda, else we would cry, and that would not look good up here. So, go ahead and do it, let's get it done, let's get this city crashed, and maybe we can rebuild something out of the ashes.
The final speaker is Luis Palomeros.
I think Bob put a slip in. Luis Palomeros, community activist. How many more murals do we need? We have a $70,000 one in the pipeline, we already approved that, a $60,000 one, four $25,000 ones, bathrooms and libraries. Come on, how many more? With the did fees, and we're not building anything, so how much, I mean, where are the did fees gonna pay for all this? Oh, well, we got some did fees, so let's keep on putting up murals. I'm not talking against the young man, Chris, he's doing a great job, oh, wow. But how many murals do we have to have here? Dollar Tree, 99? I mean, come on. You know, anyway, pick and save, come on. Let's save our money, and we don't gotta spend it, why would we gotta, just 'cause it's there? To keep on putting murals? A lot of people are talking about these, this is your agenda, Cabrera, your agenda. Here you bring them lobbying, lobbying, you lobbied them, and here they are. Oh, this time, we're doing, oh, how noble of us, we're throwing the kid card in there. Those kids and the schools, and we're gonna get them on social media, are you serious? Give me a break, are they gonna let them take a step on the school grounds to push that agenda? Well, Mayor got an open door there, maybe he can get it on there. But come on, how much more? Murals we gotta have in the city. Like the mayor said, Cabrera, you know, people are talking about a museum, you said that at one of the meetings. Well, let's put our money in the bank and get a nice museum here. A state-of-the-art that could service more than just a museum. Let's do that. We don't gotta go spend the money just because we're getting some. And if you ask me, we're not getting enough. How many more murals are we gonna have? We're gonna cover the whole city with mural? We'll call us mural city? Like I said, we're not in Texas, I know they got an area over there where it's covered with murals, oh, well, that's all good. You go down the, you know, freeway downtown LA, they're all over there too, and okay, that's okay too. But here in our small city, a lot of people don't want that here. I guess when, when you're running again for your seat, you know, come on, Cabrera. People are tired, they don't, they don't want any more murals, do something else with the money. Make it, spend it somewhere else. Like you said, people are talking about a museum, well, go for it. Save and save and save till we got enough did fees, if we're getting any more business this way, because Hillwood could've gave us a lot of money. Here I go, I'm hitting Hillwood again. They were gonna give us $30 million plus, open up some soccer fields in the east, and a baseball diamond, a team post, and we weren't even gonna have to maintain it. That was a lot of money. We could've did a lot of things, but now they're bringing in the kid card and the school card, and we're gonna do, wow. He had his all his stuff together today. I'm not talking against the young man here. I'm just saying, the way you do it, how underhanded and sneaky that it's going down here. I mean, look through.
The final speaker is Bob Palomeros.
Good evening again. Yeah, this young man, he's, I hope he doesn't take anything personal. This has to do with the city. I'm sure he's, can put a mural anywhere and people would appreciate it. The good thing, the cost came down. I don't know how much smaller it is to the $70 million one, or thousand, I mean, the $70,000 one that's going here on the rec center. But anyway, there it is. It kinda seems to me that the way these things are coming up, K one, K two, seem to be that Cabrera's in a spin, a campaign spin cycle. You know, he's, this is what you do, let me show the people that, what I'm doing. Let's push these things here. You know, there's no study sessions on them, while the mural ones, we know they had those, and you know, it, I'm glad they're involving the community, this is good. This is what I always envisioned, that, you know, the people of the city, I'm surprised, I mean, I respect this young man, but I'm surprised we can't find another guy to paint a mural in this city? Out of $250,000? I mean, gave us a good deal, $20, maybe. The guy that's doing the $70,000 one, he might've charged us more to do this one. So, but there's gotta be people here that can do what he's gonna do, you know, maybe not as good, who knows? I mean, you know, these are professional people, so we gotta find people that can do it here in this city. Let's keep it at home, you know, hire mobile, thank you.
That concludes public comment, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you for all of the public comments. So at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public testimony for this item, and move into council deliberation if desired. And I do have a few comments, but I see a hand raised here from councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Not every day I agree with certain people in this room. But what I like to do and ask my colleagues up here, and nothing against the young man, Christopher, nothing against you personally, I would like to get a vote to table this, this one today, and look into it, look into the whole system as it is. We get complaints from, I have gotten complaints from residents saying, you know, we gotta do something with spending this money on murals all over the city. Can't we use this somewhere else? I think we should all sit down and look at, wait a minute, these did funds, yes, they're for the murals, but we can change that. Good example where the money can go to is the Senior Citizens Center. Yes, we're investing a lot of money, but we can invest a lot more. Housing for senior citizens, that's a city can provide, that's something else we can spend money on too. You know, these planning, or the Art Commission meetings, they're open to the public. If you wanna hear how they process this at the Arts Commission, attend one of these commission meetings, and you'll know what goes on. But I feel, my personal feeling is, and I hope my colleagues will understand, that it's a lot of money. And I've heard it from other residents from other cities. Moreno Valley, you guys are spending so much money on painting your buildings. It should go elsewhere, just not to the murals. What I like to do is table this, and bring it back at a later date, and let the public get some more information, how all this is going on, what the city has, has done in the process. I don't think it, the community knows that, what goes on. But let's table this, if I can get a vote to table this and bring this back, and again, we don't need a study session. We just need the residents to get involved in these committees, attend these committees to find out what's going on. So I ask at this time, if I can get my colleagues to, to agree with me to table this for a different, a different meeting.
I second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to table. Before we take a vote, I just wanna respect, 'cause I see some hands raised, in case there's any comments that the council would like to make. I know there's a motion and a second, but I see a hand raised by Mayor Protem. And I thought I saw another one. So just before we take a vote, if it's okay with you guys, if anyone wants to make any comments. First, I'll go to you, Mayor Protem.
So I was just going to say that I, this project in particular is in my district. When you talked about El Potrero Preschool, that is the school that my, my youngest goes to, and I know the children would be very excited for that to happen. I'm also looking at the timeline, I'm okay with tabling it, because I'm also looking at the timeline of we're sitting in March, and the reality of the children being able to assist, 'cause school would be out in late May, early June, getting the project off. But I do understand, 'cause I have heard concerns from the public about the amount of projects coming, at the rate that they're coming. And also, and I believe councilmember Baca Santa Cruz brought this up last time, that it doesn't have to just be for murals, that we had discussed up here, looking at it from a perspective of how we can engage the community more, whether that's holding workshops for children, or the, or the schools and things like that, or even doing arts with seniors. We, we had those discussions. So there's nothing, honestly, there's nothing against this project. I did like the project because, you know, that's a highly used soccer field, and it incorporated all of those aspects of it. But I do understand the concerns that the residents have, as well as a few of my colleagues up here.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and next I see a hand raised by councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Okay, so we have set policy that we are gonna be collecting money for public art. The only art I've seen come are murals. And I understand that it's the least expensive way that we can start getting our art throughout the city. But I have a question. Um, ACM Mohan, do you know the balance in our, um, public art DIF fund?
Yeah, so based on the, um, the DIF account for art, which is Fund 2916, the last time it was reported during their, um, uh, last quarterly budget versus actual review was a million thirty-two, uh, a million, one million thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. And this DIF has to be used specifically, um, as it was created. Um, there are certain parameters in which that money can be spent on. Um, and, um, it is per, um, Muni Code 3.52.020 applicability, Item C1 through 8. The policy, the art policy that council approved, also states what the art can be used for. And it is the Art Commission's recommendation, based on that policy. It is a recommendation before you tonight. As all of the art previously has been their recommendation, not staff's recommendation, based on the way you approve the policy.
Thank you. Well, um, each of us sits on one of the commissions, so I would ask whoever it is, I don't know if it's Mayor or MPD, Mayor is, that you go back to the Arts Commission and let them know that we have enough money and we're gonna continue to, maybe we wanna save up for something really fabulous. Something that will, you know, draw people in. But the murals, they're beautiful, I can't wait to see them go up. But let's see the ones go up that we've already funded. I'd like to table it as suggested and, um, come back and look at this with, um, a view of after we've done some art in the city. Can we pause, start collecting money, look at something really grand and ask the Arts Commission to bring us back a new proposal, or maybe even this proposal changed in some kind of way. But I, I love the art, I think it, the, the content, what has been brought in is very reflective of Moreno Valley. It would absolutely be a great, um, art project. But I don't know if that's something that we should be spending our money on right now.
Yeah, and just real quick, 'cause I was mentioned, uh, and then I'll get to you next. For the Arts Commission, 'cause I am the liaison to the Arts Commission, but I've actually been advised by the city attorney, and I think the same goes for all of us that are representatives for, say, the Library Commission or the Emerging Leaders Council, Traffic Commission, all those commissions where we have representation, that I, I've actually been advised by the city attorney's office and staff that we should not get involved in deliberation from the commissioners, telling them how they should spend the money or anything like that. So I, I agree with you, you know, if we could, I definitely think that I would be there giving input, but I've actually been told not to do that, to allow the commissioners to deliberate amongst themselves. So just wanted to add a little bit more to that. But I agree with pretty much everything else that you said.
I know they're very involved, those that are on our commissions and they're probably watching right now, so I think they're getting it.
Yeah, thanks. Next, Councilmember Delgado.
So this is deliberations, and I, I agree with Councilmembers Marquez, Bernard, and Santa Cruz, that we need to table this, but we just need to slow down. Doesn't it mean that this can't come back? And we, we take a different look at it. What I do wanna know though is, when we table this, what are our objectives? Who's gonna, what are we gonna do? We're gonna turn us back to the Arts Commission? Or are we going to take it from them to clean it up? Or are we just gonna slow this thing down? And like, I think you, you brought it perfect, that we need to slow down, see what's coming into the city already, I know we have the money sitting there, but, um, and then kinda pick up. I truly, truly like the fact that staff and the artists are, are talking about adding community involvement, 'cause that wasn't part of the last three. Um, a, a member of the public brought it to us and said, hey, why are we not including our community, our kids? And now we are, so thank you for that, and that's gonna continue because it's already been brought up. But what, where do we go from here? We're gonna table it for what? For, you, you have a plan, David, uh, Councilmember Marquez has a plan, I like it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Just like my colleague says, that we gotta slow down, and we do. Just 'cause we have the money doesn't mean we have to spend it overnight. Again, I love the, the drawings, the, the murals on these, on these facilities. But I think we're going a little too fast because, you know, a million dollars, wow. We, we need to stop and think. As to table this, I'd like to see the community attend these commissions and see how, what goes on, especially the Art Commission, how the process works. And give them input also, residents can do that. So my plan is, let this, the community come out, attend the commissions, any commission. And then come out and, and pick your mind again out here. Maybe you'll see different views, different, you know, comments, but it has nothing to do with the mayor because he's running for reelection or because somebody else is running for reelection. It's not a political thing here. So it's not that I'm against it, I'm not. It's just that we have to slow down, like my colleague says, slow down. And let's see what other items or other projects that we can use this money for. I mean, we can tweak it, I mean, it's not set in stone. I think we can tweak some of this around, but I, I just, just wanna go ahead and, and look into this and we'll come back with it. As a later date, maybe a couple more council meetings? It's up to my colleagues what they wanna do.
Yeah, would staff like to add anything?
I could, but I, I believe, um, uh, Mayor Protem still hasn't spoken, and so I, I wouldn't wanna change any deliberations.
Yeah, and I do, I've been reserving my comments, I, I would like to, if that's okay. Uh, just share a few things as well, I've been just, uh, holding on. But I agree, I agree with everything that's been said, right? Uh, I think that this is a kind of a rare situation where, you know, all of us worked together to put the public art policy in place last year, and it has worked very well, maybe too well. It's moved very fast, and we're getting these applications coming in. And again, just for the public's information, anyone can apply, anyone can apply for this public art application. You don't have to be an artist, any resident, anyone from outside the city can apply, and, um, that's what we've been seeing, right? These, these bureau, it just so happens that all the applications have been murals, except one, I think vinyl utility box wrap application that also got approved. So, um, you know, the, anyone can submit applications to the city. But I agree that we should probably table this and, um, there, you know, now that, uh, the Assistant City Manager mentioned that in the public art DIF, we have a million dollars, which is not a small amount of money. But again, as has been said, I just wanna reiterate, that Public Art Development Impact Fee Fund, those funds can only be spent on art. It cannot be spent on homelessness or fixing the roads or the parks. That million dollars plus can only be spent on art projects in the city of Moreno Valley. Now, it doesn't have to be murals, it can be almost any form of art, right? It could take, it could take a lot of different forms, right? But ultimately, it comes down to either what applications come to us via the Arts Commission, because this is only here because the Arts Commission approved it and recommended it to us. Or if we take action on our own and say, hey, we wanna allocate a million dollars for a museum or to start a new program at the Senior Center, right? We can do that as well, we, we could definitely do that. So I agree that we definitely need to have a more in-depth conversation, whether it's a study session or we add it to a regular meeting and have that conversation. But we definitely need to talk about how we spend that. And I also wanna mention, 'cause the topic of a museum has come up a couple of times, and, uh, I would definitely support working on an art museum, 'cause we don't have one in Moreno Valley. And I think we have the money for it. Above and beyond the million dollars in the art DIF, last year, we were allocated a million dollars in the state budget by our Assembly Member, Dr. Corey Jackson. That was a request that he made. And it looks like we're still on track to get that million dollars. As some of you may be aware, the state is facing pretty significant budget deficit. But in negotiations between the state legislature and other government officials in Sacramento, they've, you know, they have to make some hard decisions. And it looks like that million dollars is still going to come through for us. But I, I don't want to get ahead of myself too much because it's not until that money actually is in the coffers of the city that we can actually spend it. So, uh, I just wanna mention that that is still a possibility. If we have two million dollars available to spend on art, then I think it's, it's, makes complete sense to spend that possibly on a museum or something else. So, um, I see the ACM wanting to, to jump in, but I agree, we should, we should table this and schedule a more in-depth conversation on how we spend our art funds moving forward. And that could be a study session, it could be an item on a regular council meeting. So I'll, I'll pause right there, but I think there might be some further comments from the dais.
Um, so the question I have is probably the same one that Councilmember Delgado had, which is, we're tabling this project, when will it come back? 'Cause I do not want an indefinite table on it. I think it's more feasible, um, personally, to possibly bring it back in September. And I say that because, especially if we are gonna have community involvement, we are gonna reach out to schools. Um, the, if we're gonna, I don't want it just being held in this indefinite state of, is it gonna happen, is it not gonna happen? So I was, I, that's what I'm trying to get at. I know someone mentioned a couple of meetings, but a couple of meetings can, can literally mean June. It can mean August. So do we have an idea of how long we want to table it? Or is that what you're about to get to, ACM?
Well, as long, as long as deliberations are done, I, I do have, um, a suggestion and a need, from all of you and what that detailed motion is, so that staff knows how to handle the motion. So if you're done with deliberations, um, I would suggest that, um, this item be tabled, um, three months to six months. And at the rate in which DIF is growing, um, because it is, uh, based on building permit valuations greater than five hundred thousand. Obviously, you can see, uh, what that is going to yield on an annual basis, seven hundred and fifty to a million. Um, and therefore, direct staff as to any potential changes or requests uh, from the dais in which you would like staff to look at as part of art that would be physical artwork, uh, artwork, sculptures, murals, performing arts, literary arts, media arts, new media, uh, cultural facilities, uh, public galleries, uh, exit, uh, performance space, theaters, artistic studio space, amphitheater, park, uh, educational facilities or similar facilities, education lectures, presentation, workshops in art, um, and cultural, um, and other works to be determined by the city manager or designee. So as long as it's within that realm, um, and, and the entire council is, is, at least from a majority standpoint, directing staff, we can go ahead and pivot and put out calls for RFPs from artists to do sculptures or performing arts or however you would like to direct us from a policy perspective, so we can in essence get it to your commissioners in which you appointed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
Just for clarification, our motion to table is slightly different than the motion to table that comes up in various rules of procedure. So if you're inclined, if the council's inclined to wanna consider this sometime after the summer, then my recommendation would be a motion to continue. 'Cause a motion to table requires another motion to bring it back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So yeah, maybe we modify the, uh, motion.
The motion to continue, maybe three to six months from now, depending on the vote my, my colleagues take on that.
We need a definite motion that is part of the public record, so staff knows how to handle this particular item and all future, uh, items uh, that are gonna be coming in for applications that are still being received, as well as if council is wanting to pivot direction and provide staff with a direction to go out for RFP, RFQ related to a certain art item that I just read.
Yeah, so if I may just make a recommendation here, I think we should make two separate motions. The first one on this item that's on the agenda, and the motion would be to continue this item to a meeting three to six months from now, that would come back to, to the city council.
I think what we're asking for.
A definite date.
A definite date, yes, thank you.
So maybe, I heard September, if that's okay with, with the council? We can, I'll entertain a motion to continue Item K2, no, excuse me, K1 to a council meeting in September of this year.
So it would either be September 3rd, which is the first meeting, or September 17th, which is the second meeting.
Second meeting in September? Okay, the, to the, continue, so I'll entertain a motion, seeking a motion to continue Item K1 to our second council meeting in September 2024.
I'll make that motion.
And I second the motion.
There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bernard?
Yes.
And Mayor Cabrera?
Yes. So that motion carries unanimously, and before we continue, I just wanna, uh, go back to the recommendations that, uh, ACM Mohan was making there about how we move forward. He, he listed a plethora of, of ways that we can give direction to staff, and I, I think, at least on my part, I would be a hundred percent fine with giving staff that direction uh, to explore those options that were listed just a moment ago. And maybe have staff bring something back to us, um, to a regular council meeting or study, a study session, whatever that might look like.
So what I'm hearing is, uh, staff go through to see what would be, um, applicable um, and come back to a study session in a future date to discuss, um, some of these items and what might be, um, submitted through an RFP. Okay.
I agree with that, if that's okay with the council.
As far as a date of the study session, would we be looking at, um, at this particular point? We're looking at, uh, April, probably, uh, June before summer recess?
I, I see Jeremy in the back, I think he wants to share something.
No, that's fine. Councilmember, uh, Mayor and Council, I'm sorry, I just, um, I, I would hope, I'm asking for direction, if we can, on as far as, when you're discussing this right now, as far as how do we move forward with public applications, uh, between now and September? Is a direction to, um, ba- basically hold off on reviewing those until then? Kind of put a, kind of a stop on the program, um, until we have, uh, further direction?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it, it sounds like there's consensus for that, so essentially hit the pause button on any of those public art applications that come in between now and September?
Jeremy, do you, oh. Jeremy, how many applications do you get, uh, on a, per day or week?
Well, we, we are getting probably, um, one to three now, um, per month.
So it's, it's not that.
But, but, but I think there, there's, just to clarify, in our public art policy that, or program, there's, there's two avenues that we go. There's the artists that come in and they request funding for a, a project that they're proposing. But then there's also, the other side is where the city can decide, this is what we wanna do, and we put out, we, we develop the project and we put a request out for proposals. And that's what I'm hearing is, maybe put a, a, a stop, temporary stop on receiving the request for funding.
A freeze.
And we go the other way, maybe after that study session, we receive direction to go the other way for now.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so as, uh, motions need to be somewhat detailed, I, I would suggest that if there is a motion on the table to bring this back, bring the art concept back in a study session, that the study session occur in June. Um, and if that is going to occur, then it seems it would be applicable to hold, um, all, uh, applications until that time. And because hopefully from that study session, staff would then be directed by council on how to move forward with, uh, various art projects, um, and or RFP.
Thank you, Brian, so I'll, I'll make that motion according to what ACM Mohan just said, and I'm seeking a second.
Wait, before we do that.
Further deliberation, uh, Mayor Protem.
And I'm asking this because the Art Commission is going to be meeting. Will this hold up your Art Commission meetings? Will this hold up your Art Commission meetings?
Related to art?
Related to us holding this up because, um, cause I've sat on the Art Commission, so things are on the agenda, things are coming up. Will this hold up um, our residents being able to meet and have discussions, not necessarily about this type of art, but just in general, would this prevent a meeting from happening?
As a commission has um, certain dates and times, the commission uh, meetings should still occur. It's just the art applications will not be coming before them for uh, approval. So they would be able to hold a meeting and discuss anything out outside of the um, the uh, moratorium on the art applications at this particular point in time, if that is what is decided on the uh, motion.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second, is there any further deliberation before we vote? Okay, I don't see any further deliberation from the dais, Madam Clerk, uh, voice vote, please.
Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bernard?
Yes.
And Count, and Mayor Cabrera.
Yes. That motion carries unanimously as well, and I believe that addresses all of the outstanding items that we had to address. And uh, unless there's any further comment from staff, I will go ahead and continue to our next item on the agenda. Thank you so much, everyone, I'm telling you, this meeting, a lot of curveballs this meeting, but we're handling it, we're taking care of it, so. Um, okay, item K two, provide direction regarding the motion to create an ad hoc policy subcommittee regarding a homeless task force via a revision to administrative policy one point zero seven, council subcommittee meetings, and we have a report from our city manager's office.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Um, I was tasked with this uh, particular item uh, to draft the staff report um, via motion um, related to the possibility of creating a new sub, uh, policy subcommittee or committee. Um, and when I was going through that, um, I identified how subcommittees and committees are created um, and which ones we created last, and I detailed um, the minimum information uh, that is needed to develop the scope and characteristics of the committee, um, which would be used to pass uh, a future resolution and revise policy one oh seven council subcommittees. Um, this information is actually gonna be on the last slide of this presentation. Leading up to the, this particular meeting, uh, there were some additional conversations between uh, the date of the motion and this meeting in which um, at the dais, there was talk about possibly doing a homeless update. And so I put a few pieces of information together to refresh the uh, memory of council uh, as it was last updated uh, in February and November of twenty three, when we did the uh, updated uh, study sessions. Um, with that, I'm gonna go through a a few slides, I'm gonna try and do it as quick as possible. Um, but as a refresher, um, it is not illegal to be uh, homeless in the state of California. Uh, related to uh, the authority um, provided any one agency, uh, the Department of uh, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, um, HUD. Uh, there are certain elements of that particular agency that uh, do affect the city through uh, the county continuum of care. But in essence, this is a federal agency that is responsible for the national policy and programs related to housing needs. Um, and improve and develop the nation's communities, um, and as part of that budget um, and programs, we do receive HUD entitlement funds from this particular uh, agency. Uh, those HUD major programs and and so forth are listed here. Uh, the one that affects us the most is obviously the Community Development Block Grants, as I mentioned. Uh, we do, we are HUD Entitlement City, uh, as well as the Home Investment Partnership Act Block Grants. Um, so CDBG, we receive about one point nine million, home about seven hundred thousand, and then Emergency Solutions Grant about uh, two hundred thousand per year, and in fact, just in a few weeks, um, more than a month maybe, uh, you'll be receiving uh, the first kickoff item for HUD entitlement. Um, but the biggest program that affects us from the HUD uh, perspective related to homeless, um, or homelessness is Continuum of Care. Yeah, there are a a multitude of Continuum of Cares that have been uh, created uh, throughout the nation and within the state of California as well. But the um, County Continuum of Care is is what covers our jurisdiction. Um, and via HUD guidelines, they are responsible uh, for doing certain things based on federal requirements. And they're also the ones that get a a certain amount of funding uh, for doing those particular items. But in essence, uh, they are a regional agency that is responsible for homelessness. The actual uh, creation and existence of the Riverside Continuum of Care uh, dates back to um, a long time ago. Um, and the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, um, which spans fifty states and six um, United States territory has um, dedicated Riverside County as a continuum of care within their system. Um, but Continuum of Cares have been out um, in the uh, realm of uh, working with homelessness since nineteen ninety-three, and specifically in California, there's forty-four Continuum of Cares that cover um, the fifty-eight counties that make up the state. When you look at the uh, programs and the multiple programs that provide homelessness, um, or homeless assistance uh, through the Continuum of Care, um, there are a multitude of programs, and each of the Continuum of Care's um, applicants um, which uh, we are part of, uh, we are, just like every agency within the Riverside County are applicants uh, with a continuum of care, we do partner with them to try and uh, address homelessness from a regional perspective. Goals and objectives, uh, one of their um, goals and objectives uh, is through the Housing and Workforce Solutions Department, uh, which is a division uh, the COC's division's primary purpose is to develop and maintain an effective uh, countywide continuum of care. Uh, it oversees the community's plan to organize and deliver supportive social services, including housing options, which meet uh, meets the specific needs of homeless individuals and families. Ultimately, the goal of the Continuum of Care is to move homeless uh, people toward stable housing and maximum self uh, sufficiency. If you recall back on in February of last year, November of last year, a lot of the um, slides and topic was about the annual uh, point in time count in uh, which is the Continuum of Cares um, or the county's point in time count as required by HUD. Um, that is one of their major goals, um, and major programs. Um, as part of the Continuum of Care, just as I mentioned before, we are a partner with uh, that particular, um, and a stakeholder within um, the Continuum of Care. We do have to maintain uh, membership and good standing, we do have to uh, attend a certain number of the meetings, uh, which is basically every meeting, um, as well as if we miss more than two meetings, uh, we lose our voting rights. Um, the department that is responsible for um, ensuring that we meet all of our requirements, uh, the COC requirements is of, is Financial Resources, part of Financial and Management Services. Um, as this continues into the uh, goals and objectives, uh, this basically states that the delegate, um, and who will vote for the organization. If you keep in mind, uh, the the COC is a um, i- i- is an organization and a and it is a staff-to-staff level um, uh, partnership, so the staff of the Continuum of Care and and the Housing Department work with the staffs of all the um, um, partner cities. Um, so just wanted to mention that, and that's why Financial Resources is tasked with um, being uh, the liaison and designated uh, delegate uh, for voting purposes. The um, Canino, Continuum of Care actually manages the homeless population through what's called homeless management information systems, and in essence, what it is, i- is it is a technology that they use uh, to identify the various interactions with uh, the homeless population. And ultimately, what has happened with the homeless population as to whether or not they're requiring s- or um, accepting services, what services are they accepting, which ones they aren't, um, if they're not accepting services, um, they are categorized um, differently um, than um, homeless. So that is the system in which we partner with and we're able to use that um, uh, client-level data uh, to make uh, informed decisions on how we partner with uh, various agencies. Um, they also have the Emergency Food and Shelter Program, um, it was created in nineteen eighty-three. Um, and they've dispersed over three point three billion. I actually included a link in this particular slide as well as an attachment to the staff report, um, that shows all of the various shelters and services um, broken down by district, uh, in case any of your constituents asked. Um, they also have emergency housing vouchers, um, that are available to all county residents, and um, every city that is partnered with the COC can also call and um, be able to access those as well. Um, if you recall in previous uh, study sessions when we went over homelessness, I just provided the various shelter and housing uh, that is available in the county, I'm just gonna go through these particular uh, slides fairly quick. And as a reminder, there's uh, about three thousand five hundred um, beds that are available or shelters uh, that are um, are available for homeless homelessness throughout the county. Excuse me, uh, Riverside Continuum of Care, um, when we look at those elements from a funding service perspective, um, they, they do uh, receive most of their funding from the federal government, um, but we will in the next slide show you an impact report. Um, but they do have a hundred and forty private and public se- uh, sector organizations and homeless service providers uh, that participate in uh, the homeless efforts, and uh, there's various programs that uh, very much like us, we pass through our HUD entitlement doll- dollars uh, to our nonprofits and 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 um, community-based organizations, they do the, in essence, the same thing uh, with their um, HUD entitlement dollar, dollars as well. Uh, this impact report uh, is from the uh, Continuum of Cares Point in Time Count, and it kinda just shows uh, how much money has been received, um, which is sixty-two million dollars from the computer, uh, Continuum of Care. Housing Authority received eighty-seven point seven million, housing and community development total is three hundred and twenty million. And the impact over to the left-hand side of the uh, screen shows uh, of the unique individual served fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty-eight, and then it's broken down into emergency shelter, street outreach, uh, permanent housed in homeless prevention and encampment response. When you look at the homeless point in time count, um, as you know, that that is an annual requirement, uh, there have been certain exceptions that have been approved throughout the years, one of them being COVID, um, and and so forth. Um, in the last count, uh, in twenty twenty-three, which was occurred on January twenty-fifth, uh, twenty twenty-three, um, Continuum of Care, when they went through and counted uh, Marina Valley, they had seventy-seven unsheltered individuals. Fifty-six were interviewed and twenty-one were observed, and what they mean by observed is um, they would be driving to a particular location where our heat maps show that there's uh, homeless based on what um, our partners are telling us in the field, uh, they see somebody walking by and um, they may appear to look homeless, um, because they do this um, at six o'clock in the morning, so uh, they count those individuals as well, um, and they count, count them as observed. So very similar to uh, what we've done in past years, this is just a historical data to show what our interviewed and observational um, uh, counts have been over uh, the time. And for each year, you can see uh, what those are, and in twenty twenty-one was the uh, specific exemption that we received for or that they received for uh, the pandemic. Related to uh, the homeless count, when I take that and compare it to some of our peer um, cities, um, we take a look at the actual count of unsheltered homeless, the population, um, that is usually estimates uh, from the uh, California Department of Finance, which is the E-five report. And then what we do is we take a look at the homeless count per one thousand population to see how in a percentage-wise do we compare to other cities. And so our homeless count per uh, one thousand residents is um, point three six nine seven, and you can see uh, compared to every other city, uh, we're lower except for um, Temecula, uh, in which they're at point three two one four. Also wanted to get into the city housing development elements because um, of the various affordable housing um, developments that we do have, um, and and some other things that have occurred uh, over the uh, last year and which weren't in previous slides. So the city received a pro-housing designation from the State Housing uh, Community Development Department, which is HCD in June of twenty-three. Um, that particular designation, uh, it was created in order to um, increase the availability of housing statewide, um, for the critical uh, betterment and quality of life of all Californians to end homelessness. Um, and because of that particular designation and requirements um, that are required of that, we did submit an application um, long about eight, March or April of uh, twenty-three, and we were successful in in receiving the designation. Uh, which is inclusive of all the city policies, procedures, and practices, HCD deemed the city compliant with the state housing element law. Um, there were only thirty-seven cities that have received this designation out of four hundred and thirty, uh, four hundred and eighty-three cities statewide. So um, locally, um, with this particular designation, local governments are eligible for pro-housing incentive programs. In fact, that was one of the items that I believe you took up last um, meeting and approved um, uh, the application be submitted uh, for some funding uh, that potentially will yield about one point one million if we are successful. And that would go towards uh, again, affordable housing. Uh, city um, uh, provides incentives uh, to affordable developers, so the incentives that we have are density bonuses, uh, as well as a reduction of development impact fees, and for uh, affordable housing, it is a fifty percent reduction in developmental impact fees. Um, the city does receive, as I mentioned before, about seven hundred thousand dollars annually of the Home Investment Partnership Program Funds uh, from HUD, and we do partner um, with uh, various affordable uh, housing developers. Um, and these incentives plus the funding assist uh, those affordable housing developers such as Kingdom Development, Mary Erickson, Habitat for Humanity, those are just to name a few that are currently in the pipeline or we've just completed uh, certain projects with, uh, to subsidize the development of affordable housing. Uh, this includes partnering with the county and state for additional funding solutions, because every time uh, a developer does affordable housing, we always need uh, the state tax credits, um, as well as the county uh, PLHA or other um, um, home, uh, low to moderate income uh, funding that can also subsidize um, uh, the affordable housing development. They all have to kinda be from different buckets because of uh, of various laws that we can't duplicate uh, federal funding and state funding, but um, affordable housing is highly subsidized. Um, so these particular funds um, are are invested into the construction and rehabilitation of affordable multifamily rental projects in partnership with those developers throughout the city. That particular um, partnership has yielded one thousand two hundred and thirty-nine affordable units as part of uh, these efforts. And currently, the city is working on two affordable uh, housing developments, which is gonna add another forty-three units to that number. We also um, have shown you this in the past, this is just a refresher and a reminder of all the various programs that we have uh, or had during the twenty twenty-three um, year, and so the three premier ones that we do have are the Homeless Assistance Program, the Homeless to Work Program, and the Rapid Re-Housing Program, all with the Salvation Army. Uh, but we do have a multitude of other um, partners as part of our HUD entitlement process. If you keep in mind, uh, the Homeless Assistance Program, Homeless to Work Program are funded out of the General Fund uh, at a hundred thousand per year. Uh, the Rapid Re-Housing Program was um, uh, created through um, community or COVID um, funding through uh, Emergency Solutions Grant. Um, and then that is also being funded through some federal earmark uh, funding um, going forward, as well as the Homeless to Work Program. forward, as well as the Homeless to Work Program. Again, this is just, shows you what our Homeless to Work Program is, and thought it would be a good thing to just quickly go through some of the slides that Salvation Army has provided in the past, specifically Homeless to Work. That particular program is to clean areas in the city to make a happier, healthier place for all to live, but it also gives a day's wage to the homeless individual and puts them through a program that ultimately provides them wraparound services in order to be fully employable at the end of the 90-day program. Some of the successes and the stats for Homeless to Work, they've had almost 11,000 outreach interactions, 925 referrals to health and addiction programs, 228 through the hiring process, 139 completed the 90-day program, and over 84 have moved into housing and employment Just goes to show that 60% of our individuals who completed the program moved on to stable employment and housing, and this was always a fun fact that I didn't think was possible, but over 44,000 pounds of trash and debris were collected leading up to 2023 through this particular program. And again, this just goes and shows that there's case management and counseling over the 90 days of this particular program, and that it is all to ensure that individuals who continue to seek the services and the assistance will be rewarded at the end and be able to have secured positions with our partners, Waste Management, the Salvation Army, Harbor Freight, and other felon-friendly employers throughout our city. The Homeless Assistance Program was created a few years after the Homeless to Work Program, so there's, keep that in mind when we talk about the metrics, but 50 to 60 interactions per week serves as a conduit between the individuals and the services. It provides an outreach coordinator as part of the task force that we'll talk about in a moment, and there's about average of one to two people exit homelessness every week through this particular program. The Rapid Re-Housing Program that I had mentioned before, which was through Emergency Solutions Grants, COVID funding, that particular model was a specific funding of $1 million, and they were supposed to help 40 households, and it actually helped 51 households permanently housed, 35 households accessed emergency hotels, and 45 households homeless prevention. So it exceeded the metrics in which we had developed and HUD approved for the 40 families that were going to be assisted. Wrong button. And again, this is just their holistic pathway to hope and healing that the Salvation Army uses as their faith-based partner of ours. Getting back into some of the other programs outside of the Salvation Army that are part of the 23 funding through HUD, Emergency Shelter for Youth, the Community Betterment and Problem-Oriented Policing, Safe Communities Project, the MoVan for Senior Transportation, I know is a hot topic for those at the senior center. CASA is always a big requister, and they're very appreciative of the fact that that funding helps the youth go through court-appointed requirements. Again, a lot of different things, homeless prevention with Lutheran Social Services. When you look at the funding that we've had for homelessness or those that are close to being homeless, this basically just shows all of the funding, and this one is unique because this still covers the years in which we did, we were in the pandemic, and we were getting special COVID funding through CDBG and ESG and so forth. The city does have a homeless assistance team as part of the homeless assistance program. We coin it Task Force, but in essence, what it is, is it's a monthly meeting with all of our following partners, which is RUHS Mobile Crisis Team and other county programs, the SEBAT, Salvation Army, Community Enforcement and Park Rangers, and then also the City Program Administration, which is myself, the CFO, and Natalia Lopez, who is the Financial Resources Division Manager, along with our law enforcement and fire services as well. They attend those meetings. As part of that, this is a homeless assistance task force that we have internally, but we do have an actual email that we use. It's thehomelessassistanceteam@movail.org, and we're able to deploy various teams when we do have requests. So speaking of that, just real quick, the reason we deploy, when we do get a request for homeless and depending on what that is, we typically deploy the same team, and the deployment of the team is Community Enhancement Officers, the Salvation Army, RUHS Mobile Crisis Teams, SEBAT, which is the Clinical Behavioral Assistance Team if mental health is needed, and law enforcement. The reason why we have law enforcement role with the task force is because of the safety element, not only of our staff, but of our partners as well. And this is due to prior incidents where Community Enhancement Officers were threatened via various knives and/or other items that potentially would cause bodily harm. In fact, that required us to, in essence, purchase special bulletproof, or sorry, special vests, because a bulletproof vest, which I didn't know at the time, doesn't stop a knife. Bulletproof vests, although they are Kevlar, because of the fibers in the Kevlar, it will actually allow a knife to go through. And so that is the reason why we do roll the entire task force to any one call. But the goal is always to have the resident accept our team's services. And the RUHS Mobile Crisis Team and the TSA, they do their best to try and get the residents to accept the services. But if they don't, then law enforcement must check their backgrounds because, in essence, they are now trespassing and violating other laws that are outside of Community Enhancement and TSA or RUHS ability to continue trying to provide services to the resident. The other item that we do is, on a quarterly basis, we have a nonprofit and clergy roundtable. Staff meets with them, and a lot of times we go through various business training opportunities through small business administration. Nonprofits and the clergy are, in essence, businesses in our city as well. They're just not-for-profit, so we try and provide them assistance with bettering their actual businesses so that they potentially could, or eventually, be able to be applicable to the HUD entitlement funding process, because a lot of nonprofits struggle with having all of the requirements, as that is very restrictive funding. Excuse me. We also discuss various events and programs that the nonprofits and the clergy are doing throughout our community, and we provide them a safe space to be able to market that particular material. It's called the My Movail website, and we put all of their events on the calendar and promote their events at that particular website. And then we have also funding opportunities through the HUD entitlement process. We're always updating the nonprofits and clergy roundtable as to when that cycle is, and other presentations as required. And again, this just shows some of the resources that we offer our nonprofit and clergy. We also have the City Local Resource Guide, which contains over 75 organizations and a multitude of services that are listed. That also resides on our website, the My Movail website. We do print it and provide it to our task force, and it's out there in the community, as well as we do provide links, which is the movail.gov/homless. If you actually go there, there are many other resources other than just the resource Again, this is our resource guide. It kind of shows all the various pages that we currently have, but it is very extensive. The HUD entitlement process that I mentioned, we do have specific funding from Community Development Block grant, also specific requirements, but the biggest thing to take away from this slide, it's approximately $2 million per year, and there are certain categories in which we have to meet. And so the public service category from CDBG is only 15% of that $2 million. So it's very, very small via HUD guidelines. That is not our requirement or our guideline, that is the HUD's guidelines. We also have the Home Partnership, which is roughly $700,000 per year, and these are some guidelines and various items that we look to partner with various developers. As well as ESG grant, ESG grant roughly $200,000, as I previously stated. The biggest thing about ESG grant that deters most nonprofits or community-based organizations is the fact that there's 100% matching requirement that the pass-through entity must agree to. And so if they're getting $30,000, they also have to come in with $30,000. And so, again, not a requirement of the city, it is a requirement of HUD. What are the challenges? So challenges are regional, continue to reduce the number of families below poverty. We have continued to reduce the poverty rate here in the city, and we continue to increase the average household income of the city to 101,000. If you recall, just the last time I provided this, back in November timeframe, we were around 96,000. Addressing individuals resistant to service, this is the biggest issue that we see in the deployment of our homeless task force. They go to a call, they try and, they discuss all of the services, they try to provide individuals a way to accept our services, and they don't. A lot of times, there's mental health, there's chemical dependency, but even with RUHS, they do not have the enforcement, even with Care Court, to be able to force somebody into a program. Obviously, there's 51-50 laws, but if you recall, the Care Court was very narrow when RUHS gave that particular presentation at the November study session. And we need to continue to increase the job opportunities for felons. What can the region offer? We've always stated that COC housing inventory needs to be increased, mental health facilities, chemical dependency treatment, employment adoptions for felons, or sorry, employment options for felons, comprehensive wraparound services, homeless shelter on the western Riverside County side, financial support for families that are on the verge of homelessness. A lot of times, a person is, you know, one flat tire away from not being able to make their rent, as well as Care Court. That completes the information that I wanted to provide as a refresher. But before I get into council questions, I just was, provided some information this week that I thought would be pertinent to the conversation as well. So Riverside County Fire, CAL FIRE, reported that there were 432 incidents for 2023 involving unhoused individuals, and they're reporting that this is a reduction of 26% compared to the prior year in 2022. Rivco recently approved, sorry, Riverside County recently approved through their Board of Supervisors, funding for RUHS to build the Wellness Village. That village will now be built in Mead Valley as opposed to Hemet. So in essence, it's going to be less than nine miles, 10 miles from the city, and we will be able to actively participate in being able to provide some of our homeless population with that opportunity. And what that is, is basically apartments up to 300 units for certain consumers that have no safe home or home at all that are attending outpatient mental health or substance abuse treatment on campus. So basically, what it's doing is those that are in treatment, it's going to give them at least three to nine months of stable housing as they go down that path to recovery. There's various centers for care, behavioral health, urgent care, sobering centers, mental health rehabilitation center, crisis residential treatment, and so forth. So from that standpoint, it will be very good to have that on the west side of Riverside County. Also, related to the HUD entitlement process, that is currently underway. We will be trying to be bringing something back in April, and I think I'll be able to provide some very good news in the near future in which, looking at partnering with a new partner that will have the ability to house a home, over 100 homeless individuals for a 12-month period, if the homeless individuals accept our service. So that's about all I can state on that. I can't state the particular partner or organization as we are still working through that process. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and stop. I'm going to see if there's any council questions of any of the information prior to us moving forward with the actual committee scope and characteristics conversation that's going to be on the next slide. So any questions related to what I had stated, I think it would be best if we got those questions out of the way and then let you guys get to the conversation about the committee and what ultimately that committee would look like from a scope and characteristic perspective.
Yeah, thank you so much, Brian. And do you know about how much longer the presentation's going to go after this set of questions, by any chance?
One slide.
One more slide, okay. We're going to take a quick break, a five-to-10-minute recess, and we'll be right back. We're going to take a quick break, five to 10-minute recess, and we'll be right back. All right, welcome back to our council meeting. We are going to resume from our brief recess and pick up right where we left off, which was for questions, if there are any council questions for staff based on the information that has been shared so far. We'll go ahead and entertain those questions now. And I see some hand raised, hands raised here, Councilman Delgado.
Yes, before deliberations, that's, that's later on down the road. But I do have one question from Brian regarding the COC. I know you mentioned it real briefly for our city, who is the delegate?
The delegate is actually.
Position, is it a position?
It, it is actually a group of positions. So it is the Financial Resources Division of the Financial and Management Services Department. That particular division manager, Natalia Lopez, and her team is responsible for ensuring that we meet all of the requirements with our meeting, being at the meetings and the meeting requirements related to COC, sorry.
No, that's, that's perfect, actually, because in my mind, a delegate would be an elected, but there are no electeds on this, right?
There are none, no. And the way they, they state delegates and, and so forth, it's the language that they use, but it is all staff to staff. So it's county staff, city staff coming together for the betterment of the county's continuum of care.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, how many homeless do we have right now?
The last time there was a count, the county point-in-time count in January of '23 was 77.
77. Can the city do their own count at any other time? I know you mentioned there's certain times.
I guess they could. The, the, the city is not required to do their own count because they're not receiving funding from the HUD government to do so. Even our HUD entitlement dollars that we receive do not require us to do a point-in-time count. The point-in-time count requirements from HUD are specifically for the continuum of cares throughout the, throughout the nation in the 44 within the state of California.
Let me ask you this. We have 77 homeless supposedly in Moreno Valley. Out of the 77, what would you say are transits out of 77?
I wouldn't be able to speak to a specific number. What I would be able to say is that based on what we're hearing from the task force that is out in the field and dealing with the homeless population, we see more people not accept services than accept services at this particular point in time. They have also provided management an update during our task force meetings that they're noticing new faces. And so typically, it might take a multitude of a community, sorry, a multitude of engagement with a particular individual before they accept our services. But they're seeing new faces. And when they ask these new faces, where, where did you come from? Were you homeless from Moreno Valley? They're coming from different states. And the reason why they're, they're coming from different states is they're saying it's due to the fact that California is offering free healthcare. Now, there has also been recent reports and witnesses that there are some unmarked vans that dropped off some individuals in our city. And that is a plaguing problem with jurisdiction to jurisdiction related to homelessness because some programs in other jurisdictions is to just move them and drop them off in a different jurisdiction. We do not do that. But we have recently been, as a result, we've seen an uptick in that, at least that many.
Is there any legal, let me rephrase it, any criminal, against the law, illegal actions we can take for, if we catch somebody dropping off individuals?
Yes, but unfortunately, when you have a van, just pull up, open the door, people get out and the van goes, continues, it's very difficult to even, one, have a witness. Two, it just appeared that, you know, in this particular case, we came in right after the fact and unfortunately didn't have any plate numbers or anything like that.
Is it illegal for residents to give homeless people money?
It is not illegal from a state statute. Various entities and cities do have various panhandling ordinances and so forth. And so we do not encourage residents actually provide money to any panhandlers for homelessness or other means. There are certain reports in which people have stated they've given money to individuals at a stop sign and then, or stoplight, and then they go getting their Mercedes, so.
And that is true, we know that for a fact. But there's nothing that law enforcement can do or enforce that panhandling when it comes to money, handing out money from residents? In other words, is it illegal in the city of Moreno Valley to panhandle? But is it illegal for the residents to give them money when they're panhandling?
I'm going to defer to law enforcement when you're starting to talk about penal code and, and so forth, so.
Well, the reason I'm bringing it up, because this is what's happening in Moreno Valley. And the homeless, 77 homeless people in this city compared to Riverside or other cities. And we're spending so much time and money and we still can't control 77 homeless people? Now, that, to me, that, we have, somebody's got a problem. I'm not saying it's just us, there, we have a problem. And, and money ain't going to solve that problem. But as long as residents keep giving them money, the word gets out, go to Moreno Valley. They're generous, they'll give you money. And we do, I've seen it. So 77 people and we spend so much money and so much time. It's, how can you solve that? That's not only to you, the question to the public, how can we solve that?
So speaking about panhandling, we have learned from our partners in Temecula that there were actually people that were riding the bus from other jurisdictions to come in and do panhandling because they can make 350 to 400 a day and then they go back to the jurisdiction in which they live in. That's why Temecula only has, when they do a count, they only had 38.
Yeah.
It's because everybody else wasn't there at 6 o'clock in the morning because they don't come in until later in the day. So, and that comes directly from their homeless department.
Maybe we should start advertising, go to Temecula. I'm not, I shouldn't say that. But yeah, it's just mind blowing that we have that many homeless count and we have these major problems. So that's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Another question from Councilmember Delgado.
Yeah, sorry, this is going to be towards Chief Raquel. I have a question for you regarding the amount of homeless people or the amount of contacts, and not necessarily homeless people, but those folks that you contact. How many of them accept assistance from all the, the resources you guys do during your sweeps? How many, and approximate, because I know you don't have the numbers in front of you, but approximate, how many accept help or resources out of all the contacts you make every week? Like a percentage?
So.
Very low or?
By the time law enforcement's involved and we're called out to deal with these individuals, I would say about 100% do not accept. We're dealing with the, with the people that do not want services, that are committing crimes and trespassing. The majority of the homeless people that need services or help, we have an abundant amount of services and an abundant amount of help to provide. We can get you housed, we can get you food, we can get you to the doctor, we can get you healthcare, we can get you on your medicines. All of those things are readily available through our partnerships. By the time a deputy sheriff needs to be involved, these are the people that do not want services, that do not want anything that we have to offer.
And if you don't mind, I would just like to add that from a community enhancement perspective, it's about 10% of the current engagement are homeless residents accepting our services at this particular point in time.
That's a huge disparity in people that want help.
Yes, and there is, if you recall, back in February, November '23, there was this concept that I brought up about functional zero. In the homeless population and community and efforts, it comes down to a point where the, the homeless that you have on a particular jurisdiction, if they're no longer accepting services, are they truly homeless? They're unhoused, but are they, or do they take more of the criminal element? And that's why when you start taking a look at HUD definitions, it gets real vague and so forth. But functional zero basically means that we have services for anybody that wants services and can get off the street. The rest of those that are still remaining on the street are not necessarily homeless. There's a criminal element at that particular point in time. And that is a known model methodology within trying to stamp out homeless.
And that was my point to the question, is that's what I see. And unfortunately, we're dealing with it at the Texas Roadhouse because those guys are not homeless, those are guys, if they were doing what they're doing, when she came and reported that today, those are criminals. That's my last question, thank you.
Thank you, and just a few questions for you here, Brian. Appreciate it. Yeah, you have one more slide, but I do have some questions. Feel free to go ahead and I'll save my questions for the next.
Yeah, so this, basically, this is the last slide. So if you have questions about the information I had provided, I'll take those before we get to that slide.
Yes, I do, I definitely do, thank you. So first question, for the pit count, and I've, I think, I want to say I've been out there the past seven years, at least four, if not five times, to volunteer in the pit count. And I know a lot of my colleagues have been out there multiple times as well as staff. Is there any like margin of error in that pit count? Because to have two years in a row, 77 homeless be counted, I personally, and a lot of people out there would agree with me, that the pit count is inaccurate. It does not fully capture all of the homeless that are sleeping out in the community. And I can say anecdotally, you know, sometimes we have to leave a location and people run out of time. You know, our deputies have to respond to priority calls. So can you speak to any margin of error or the accuracy of the pit count?
As the pit count methodology and so forth is all established by HUD, the COC, I don't have the various numbers of potential variances, plus or minuses of any particular number or count. What I could mention to you is that, you know, whether they're interviewed or observed, those numbers do fluctuate as well. And so I would say that because of the consistency that we've had, I mean, if you look at, back at the historical data, or a slide that I showed, we had 61, 61, 73, 77, 38, 165, 77, and 77. The 165 was in 2020 and we challenged that. And I know why that number increased because there was a certain county official that wanted it increased. But we're fairly consistent. I mean, if you look at those numbers, we're fairly consistent. Now, yes, there could be any given day, you know, if it's raining, you're going to get different numbers. If you're driving around, you might see more observed than others. But they've been very consistent year over year. So I can't really speak to a certain percentage that might come up, at least in, from the COC world.
Thank you, yeah, there's, I think you mentioned, you know, sometimes weather could be a factor, right? It could be raining, so it's, it's just harder to see the homeless because they might be in different places, not in their normal locations. And just like you mentioned or alluded to, maybe a past county official that wanted to increase the count, there also could be the opposite where there are people, maybe some of our predecessors, who wanted the pit count to be lower for their own reasons, right? So I think, you know, that, that is an issue and just speaks to, I think, an undercount in the pit count, unfortunately. So is there a pit count happening in 2024? If not, when is the next one happening?
No, the COC through HUD, I believe they received another exemption and they are not doing the normal January pit count. They're focusing on other areas within the HUD program.
Got it, and just to clarify, a question from Councilmember Marquez. If the city wanted to, could we conduct our own? If the city wanted to, could we conduct our own pit count?
We could. I think the thing that I would ask council is who's doing it? And how is it going to be funded? And are you going to want the various GIS maps that the county uses? Because they use ESRI for their GIS. And so, if you're looking for a very similar report, that could be very, very costly.
Thank you. Now, in terms of our efforts, you mentioned some of the working groups that we have internally. You know, like, when someone calls in, I get a ton of emails and you hear public comment, you know, just the issue is there and it's getting worse, unfortunately. When we respond, say we get a complaint about an encampment that's either on private property or maybe on a sidewalk or something, what is our response? I know we work with Salvation Army, but, you know, we recently funded three additional nonprofit organizations, Building Up Lives, Hole in the Wall, Inland Compassion through a pilot program. Do we ask them to make contact before we send law enforcement? Or what is our coordinated effort to make contact with the homeless and get them assistance? Or at least offer them assistance?
The coordinated effort in response is similar to what I stated during the presentation. It is community enhancement. It is RUHS, Mobile Crisis Team, Salvation Army. It is CBAT if needed. It is law enforcement and they all roll together. And that is our response because we have to have public safety to ensure safety amongst our staff and our partners. So, they all roll together. You mentioned the three partners recently through the Community Foundation Pilot Program. That particular pilot program has nothing to do with homelessness, nor does it have anything to do with the Homeless Task Force. And so, therefore, what that money was to do was to just give them additional means to continue their current efforts for whatever services they provide our residents. We would hope that it would be, some of that was homelessness because Building Up Lives, the Hole in the Wall, Inland Compassion, they all do provide services to that population, but they also provide services to other populations. And so, that is why they are not part of the Homeless Task Force.
So, is that something that we can do? Because I think just, it makes sense. I think it's kind of common sense that if we are funding nonprofit partners now, finally, we were able to fund three additional nonprofits, Building Up Lives, Hole in the Wall, and Inland Compassion, I think it makes sense that we would at least contact them and let them know, "Hey, we received a call for service. There's a homeless encampment here, a homeless individual. This is the information that we have. If you're available and you're capable of doing it, can you make contact with them to offer that assistance?" And the reason why I say that is because some of these organizations, actually those three, some of them have been in the city operating for years, for years. Some of them are fairly new, maybe a year or two, but Hole in the Wall, Building Up Lives have been here for years. Some of them have better relationships. They have built that trust with some of the homeless individuals in the community. So, there might be a different response and more of a willingness from that homeless person to take services if Building Up Lives shows up or Salvation Army shows up as opposed to some other organization that they've never met before. So, is that something that we can implement and include into our Homeless Task Force and our approach? Is making sure that those organizations also are notified and we at least ask them? It's up to them if they respond or not, but we at least let them know, "Hey, there's a homeless encampment here. If you can, can you please go make contact with them and offer your services?"
First, can we make them part of the Homeless Task Force? No, not unless the pilot program that was approved by council via resolution changes. They would have to, they would actually, that resolution would have to include them as part of the Homeless Task Force. That was not part of the initial approval from council. It was to further their current services. It is not homeless funding. So, that would have to be completely revamped. Also, I would state that based on your comment, every one of our homeless in our city knows Salvation Army. They're engaging with them multiple times a day. And they know who they are. They know their names. And they know that they're not going to be accepting any services. They touch base with individuals fifteen times prior to services being requested. You've got to hit a certain level in order to accept services. And that's why we have the Salvation go out so many times and so frequently.
So, can you speak to, since you're mentioning Salvation Army, and they're a great partner. Don't get me wrong. I love the Salvation Army events. They're a great partner. But can you speak to, and I know this from firsthand experience because I've ran into this situation many times, where, say, there's a couple. Actually, one time there was a pregnant, a pregnant woman with her boyfriend on LaSalle and Iris. Salvation Army was making contact with them, offering them services and housing. That's a plus with Salvation Army. But where that stops short is that the ARC, for example, the ARC over off the two fifteen in the city of Paris, is men only. It does not take in women. It does not take in children. It doesn't allow for pets. So, can you speak to, like, the Salvation Army can only go so far. And if they're not able to provide those services because a couple may not want to separate or go to Riverside and then Paris, and it could cause other issues, especially if someone's pregnant or maybe a mother with children, for example, how are you going to separate the mother from their children? So, can you speak to that and basically that gap that exists? And again, this goes to my point of having multiple points of contact over various organizations, not just relying on the Salvation Army.
I would say that what you just stated is a criticism of every homeless program up and down the state. Unfortunately, there are shelters that are men only, that are women only. There are very few that are a couple. There's some that don't allow dogs, cats. The reason why is because through all the various programs up and down the state, it has been proven that when you have couples in a shelter, it causes more problems than not. And therefore, the COC runs that same issue. When you look, when you call the COC for shelters, they have the exact same issues. We deal with the same shelters that they deal with. Salvation Army deals with the same shelters in which the COC deals with and that they operate because they also, Salvation Army, receives COC funding. We're able to piggyback off of that funding, plus our funding, and be able to access a multitude of shelters. But I know that Mayor Protim knows it best that in that particular population, there's not many shelters that allow families. And until there is one that is actually built, you will not see families be able to transition through shelter together.
I'm glad you said until one was built because I've actually visited a shelter that addressed all of those concerns. And I brought this to us about a year ago when we had this discussion about the Carnegie Homeless Shelter in Santa Ana, where they house couples, families, singles, pets. And I actually toured the entire facility and asked them how they did it, how they got it off the ground, how it ran. So, I don't want to enter the conversation of us building a shelter, but I do think that when we say like, there's not, until someone builds a shelter, it has been done. It's actually do, it's actually happening in Santa Ana. And so, it's there. For me, we're having this conversation and I'm actually a little dismayed because this was us to provide direction regarding a motion to create a sub or an ad hoc committee. And this is now turned into a discussion about services. I'm not denying the services that are here. What I was trying to get at, at that discussion is we have all these community partners. We have these nonprofits that are doing the work, but they can't come to your task force because there's a lot of, there's a lot of sensitive information. We have the public that's showing up and they're having these consistent complaints or they're emailing, they're texting. And what I was trying to do was just provide a space, just like when we do our subcommittee for financing or a subcommittee for public safety, where they could come, they could say what's going on, hear what we're working on, say what the trends are, and say like, "Hey, has anyone thought about going here?" Where there could just be this discussion between all of us instead of just the select few that if you're not signing up or you're not part of the county for this or that, you're not a city employee, you can't go to that. That's honestly what this, was what I was trying to get done. And it has morphed into something way more than that. Because that's honestly all I was trying to do, was to provide a voice for the residents who are consistently emailing, consistently calling, talking to me about what they're seeing as they're going to CVS. Heck, I've seen it over here on Sunnymeat, people defecating and trying to figure out how the public can come instead of waiting for us to have a meeting where maybe we talk about it or they come to public comments, but a meeting where they knew the first or second Wednesday at six o'clock, they knew they could come and this is where we would have this discussion. So, I don't know how this morphed into this.
I want to make two apologies. One, sorry when I was saying that it needs to be built. I know there's not one in Riverside County. Two, the reason why I developed this way was for other comments that had been made on the dais since the motion, as well as when you see the next requirements of scope and characteristics, it's going to have to come with a budget and so forth. So, I just need, needed everybody to make sure that they were on the, had the most recent and up-to-date information related to this topic. That's why I developed it this way.
Yeah, and I, I'm asking all these questions because all this information was brought up and I also wasn't expecting all of this, you know, this very extensive presentation, honestly. But since we're here, I'm asking the questions and I agree that, you know, I don't want to go into deliberation because we're not there yet. We're still on council questions of staff. So, I want to refrain from going into deliberation. But, yeah, I just, I get frustrated too because sometimes it feels like we're just getting reasons why something can't be done and something needs, more needs to be done. But for council questions, just three more. For the city of Moreno Valley, you had a slide on there that looked into how many beds are available to provide for the homeless population in Riverside County. How many beds are physically located in the city of Moreno Valley?
That I don't have off the top of my head. The reason why we don't look at physically in our city is because we are part of the COC. It is a regional pandemic or epidemic and therefore, we utilize all of the resources that are available to us and all thirty-five hundred beds are available to us. And so, that's why I don't worry about how many is in the Moreno Valley because I know that we can tap into the network and be able to get vouchers for any homeless because we're a part of the COC. So, I don't know that off the top of my head, but it is on the slides. There is a section for Moreno Valley.
Yeah, so, I think, I mean, we've talked about this before and the answer is zero. We've talked about, not that we have access to, but how many physical beds are actually in the city of Moreno Valley that we can make contact with a homeless person and say, "Hey, there's a bed on Sunnymeat Boulevard. There's a bed on Alessandro where you can go sleep for tonight and we can provide you wraparound services." Our conversation has always been zero. So, if you're going to provide a different number, I would like to know that because that's something new that I'm just finding out.
I've never said zero. These particular slides have been in here for years, ever since twenty-seventeen when I, when I first started here. As you can see, Lighthouse Social Services has Moreno Valley, thirty-seven, twenty-eight, two, thirty. These are the exact same slides that were in February of twenty-three and November of twenty-three. So, I've never stated that there were zero beds within Moreno Valley. All I'm saying is I don't look at it from that perspective because I can actually go in and tap into the thirty-five hundred beds if people were actually accepting the services that we render.
So, can you speak to those thirty-five hundred beds that are available across the county? What do the numbers look like in terms of capacity? What are the wait lists like, the wait times? Like, if we had to, if we made, because we do on a regular basis, law enforcement goes out, fire department goes out to give Narcan to someone who's overdosing on fentanyl. If we offer them housing and they take it, what do the wait lists look like for the beds that we refer them to? And I actually am kind of disappointed that we don't know exactly where these beds are in Moreno Valley, exactly how many there are. This is, this is information we should know. So, can you speak to, you know, any homeless that are referred to housing? What do the wait lists look like? Are there available beds or are they all at capacity? How long do homeless have to wait to get a bed?
I'll give, I'll give you an example. You were, you received an email on Friday from a homeless concern. She was housed over the weekend and we have long-term housing for her and her twenty-four-year-old son. Her twenty-four-year-old son is actually entering into the Homeless to Work Program through Salvation Army. And unfortunately, they couldn't take her fourteen cats, but they were able to take two cats. And that was all done through Salvation Army within forty-eight hours of notice.
Yeah, so that's one case, which was a success. But to my question about wait lists and things like that, are you saying that there are no wait lists and that at all times there are available beds for the homeless?
I will say that if we actually get a yes, all accept services, we can almost house them within forty-eight hours of notice. But the problem is we are not getting that. They are not accepting our services.
Thank you. Two more questions. Six oh-two letters. Could you briefly, just very briefly, for the public's information, share what a no trespassing or six oh-two letter is? And do we have any data on, within the city of Moreno Valley, how many private properties, how many shopping centers have six oh-two letters on file? And what is our process for, you know, do we ask a private property owner to get a six oh-two on file? Are there reasons why they refuse to get that on file? Is a six oh-two letter effective? Can you share anything about that?
Yeah, so, six oh-two, the reference is to a penal code, six oh-two. And what you stated was the trespassing penal code. And in essence, what that is, is that if a private property owner would like to go ahead and notify the city that if for some reason there is any trespassing on their property, they could file a six oh-two letter with the city, which is good for twelve months. And what that does is if for some reason there is any trespassing on their property within that twelve months or within the timeframe in which that letter is, or document is effective, then the city can go ahead and respond. We would respond if it is a homeless situation. We would respond with the Homeless Task Force, as I stated, is our normal response. And if they accept service, then we were able to get them into a program. If they don't accept the service and there's a six oh-two on file, then law enforcement has to go the law enforcement route. Do we actively promote to the business community and/or residential owners or private owners that their six oh-two is readily available? I will say that when there are various cases that are in a certain areas, community enhancement teams are going to those areas and talking to those particular property owners, business owners, residents, and letting them know that if this continues, here are their options, here are their solutions. And the six oh-two letters do come up in conversation. They do mention and they're, the property owners would be aware that it is a twelve-month election. That's the problem with the six oh-two penal code is that it is not in perpetuity or until that property owner changes title or transfer or sells the property. And it requires the property owner to then submit a six oh-two in a timely manner when that is getting ready to lapse. Are there any property owners, I believe you asked, are there any property owners that don't like the six oh-two, don't want the six oh-two, or have rescinded their six oh-two? There was one property owner on Sunnymeat that recently rescinded their six oh-two because they didn't want to have community enhancement on their property to deal with their municipal code violation with trash and other debris. And the fact that when community enhancement did go, find out there was a six oh-two on file and the homeless individuals that were on their property didn't accept services, then it took a law enforcement route. The property owner in that particular instance has been a longtime property owner with multitude of violations over the years and is just upset at the city. To my knowledge, there's been no other rescension of a six oh-two letter.
Thank you. And so, that's one out of, approximately how many private properties are there in the city of Moreno Valley?
That's something I do not have readily available in my, in my brain, but we can definitely get that information. definitely get that information for you if, if you request.
If I may, can I, I know, we're going to jam on this, but the 602 is very expensive too, because the property owner has to go testify in court, then they literally wrap around an entire trial, court judicial process for a trespass, and that is very expensive for a misdemeanor. So just as, as an FYI, sometimes these guys are reluctant to do it because they know they have, the property owners, because they have to show up for court and testify and continue the year, the 12-month process to keep them off their property. So it is, it is a process, and that's why there's not a lot that do it.
But even with that, I would just like to add that we're not actually receiving recensions in the 602 letters. It's just that the property owner is no longer pursuing the case. But it, but in essence, it did get those particular individuals off their property because of the fact that, of the response and so forth. It's just that they're not adjudicating the case.
Got it. And then last question. CBAT teams, that's also something that came up. Can you share how many CBAT teams we have? And also, of the CBAT teams that we have, are they fully staffed with the social worker or whatever staff comprises a CBAT team?
So over the years, since we were the test pilot program for the county CBAT through RUHS and the Sheriff's Department, council has approved three CBAT teams through the budgetary process. One CBAT team is, is fully staffed with the clinician. The other two, we do have the deputies, we just don't have the clinicians. But because of the mobile crisis team through RUHS, we have two teams in which we didn't have before, so we have more resources out there than we would have just without the CBAT. The problem that we're having is this, is that from an RUHS perspective, when they have a clinician apply for and accept the position of a CBAT clinician, they actually go out to the field and get ingrained in what a CBAT does. And unfortunately, they say, why am I going to get the same amount of money for what I could be doing back at the facility? And therefore, that is what is causing delays in the current hiring. There is no incentive, no increase for the CBAT clinician out in the field as opposed to in the office. And so that's where the county is currently working with the Sheriff's Department and RUHS, because those are two county departments. They're working with the Board of Supervisors to come up with a solution so that the CBAT teams amongst all the jurisdictions that contract with county sheriff will be successful. But we do have one, plus the two mobile crisis teams.
Thank you. And those two unfilled, I won't say vacant, but unfilled clinician positions, are those funded by the city? Does that come out of our general fund or the community foundation?
So as part of the contractual arrangements of when those were, those CBAT teams were brought on and invested by council, they are funded through the contract and would be a general fund expenditure if they were actually deployed. So since those positions are vacant, we are not being charged for those at this particular point in time.
Okay. And so is, if we're not being charged, but it sounds like the funding is allocated in the budget, it's just not being spent? Am I understanding that correctly? Because if we're getting charged for it, the money has to come from somewhere. So could we reallocate that funding if the council desired to spend that on other homeless services?
I would strongly suggest that no funding would be reallocated because you have a contractual arrangement in which you approved a contract with a certain amount of staff and staff hours and services, and if those services do come through, you are legally obligated to contractually meet your obligations. So I would suggest that we would not do that, and that if there is any savings, that we look at some other funding source or some other allocation to potentially, or fund balance. But I would strongly suggest, because you, you have approved a contract, that you leave that funding intact.
So is that something, I understand the contract, but whenever is the expiration date? Whenever that comes up and we negotiate, as we always do, that's something that we can talk about at that time, right? To see if, you know, if, if we're, if we have an agreement with the Sheriff's Department to provide three CBAT teams, but there are issues with filling two of those positions, then maybe I just think we should probably look at what else can we do to help our law enforcement? If we can't get those two clinicians, what other positions can we fill that there are bodies for so that we're actually getting those boots on the ground, right?
Yes, there, it's a multi-year contract. I can't remember off the top of my head as to when that ends. I know Fire Services is '28. I think it was a five-year contract, so you're probably looking at '28 as well, because I believe these were just approved in '23 as part of the budgetary cycle that we're currently in. So a five-year contract, I know from a staff perspective, we are working with the Board of Supervisors, the Sheriff's Department, and RUHS to get those clinicians hired. But barring any other amendment within the contract, it would require council approval to take that under consideration if they so direct staff to bring that back.
Got it. Thank you, Brian. That's all the questions that I have. I'll go ahead and bring it back to the dais if there are any further questions. If not, I think you had one other slide, and then we can move into public comment.
Yes, sorry, let me go ahead and bring that up. I accidentally came out of the slide. So with all that being said and all the information we just went over and questions asked and answered, the last slide here is really the meat and potatoes of the Mayor Potem's request and motion to develop a subcommittee or a committee. And in my review of what we would need is basically scope and characteristics, and these all need to be addressed. And ultimately, next steps would be for you to have dialogue related to these specific characteristics and provide staff the direction in coming back. Subcommittees and committees are done through resolution to memorialize all of the scope and characteristics that are listed here, along with a revision to Policy 1.07, which is council subcommittees. And with that, I'm just going to quickly list these. So specific objectives, specific tasks, terms of the subcommittee or committee members, subcommittee or committee type and composition, which would be the number of members per position, voting or non-voting statuses, appointed or selection process, members that will serve without compensation, or if you plan on providing compensation, then that would really be a unique situation that we'd need to look at how we're going to handle, because currently all of the members are serving without compensation for subcommittees and committees. Meeting details, date and times, quorum requirements, whether they are required to follow the Ralph Brown Act, as well as identifying the support for subcommittee or committee. Who's going to be the staff report, or the staff support for administration? The budget. So typically, there is a department liaison and department that runs the subcommittees and committees, so in essence, who would be that particular support for this particular new body? With that, I'm going to leave it to any questions you may have of these specific items, but more along the line to just dialogue between yourselves.
Thank you, Brian. So before we move into public comment, are there any questions from the dais? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we do. We have eight speakers. The first three are Marybel Nunez, followed by Julianne Pedrosa, and followed by Drew Fosso.
Good evening.
Hello, good evening. Midnight, I don't know. Hello, Mayor, Mayor Potem and City Council, Marybel Nunez. With Inland Equity Community Land Trust, and I'm also, we co-lead the Inland Empire Tenants Union. And I definitely would like the city council to direct staff to support this motion. You just saw right now how much time it took to even have a more detailed conversations. And I, every time I come, I always hear people always bringing up public comments about the issues of homelessness. So I think that for us, community, we should be co-creating with city council ideas. A lot of us have ideas, and so I think working with staff, I think, would be a beautiful thing. I think that I also have the privilege of attending the COC meetings. They happen during the day. It's staff, you know, and I know they invite nonprofits to come and be a part of it, but I think we definitely need to definitely hear from the, some of the grassroots folks about, about some of holistic solutions. And I think that if there are ways where partners have other data that could be very complimentary, qualitative, quantitative data, could really paint a good picture along with what we get from PIT, the PIT count. So I really would encourage, you know, and I go, we're getting into some of the, I'm explaining some of the reasons I think it would be great. I know that for a lot of us, when we think about the unhoused, we do see the unhoused as also part of the homeless population. And so we do have about 137 families, 137,000 families that are on Section 8 that are waitlisted. And so I think for us, we do see the unhoused as homeless as well. A lot of us is one paycheck away from being homeless. I know one of the things we do is we also work with mobile home renters that have like fixed retirements, and so sometimes they have to decide from getting healthcare or paying the, you know, the rent that they have to pay in the mobile homes. So I think the struggle is for everyone. I also been, also listening to situations where a single mother that might be fleeing a domestic, you know, abuse, that they could have a 12-year-old male teenager, and they can be in a particular shelter or other place. So we do need more diversified places, and I think that nothing, you know, I think the city is doing, or the staff is doing what they can. So I think that's why the city council and the community could provide different ideas of additional resources. I think that's the key. So please pass the motion to create this Ahog Committee. Thanks so much.
The next three speakers are Julianne Pedrosa, Drew Fosso, and Roy Blackard.
Good evening, Julianne, Building of Lives Foundation. Connecting the dots and misinformation is huge, huge right here, and let me correct it real quick. Volunteer. We are all volunteers. I don't get paid. Nobody gets paid in Building of Lives, period. And so just to let you know, my husband's retired law enforcement. We feel this is our duty, this is what we do. We can close up at any time, go travel, go retire, go do our thing, but that's not what God put on us. And we're not a faith-based, we're a community-based. But I have to tell you, we got together with some of the nonprofits, and there's about 2,000 unhoused here. 2,000. You're missing the children. You're missing those ones at Couchsurf, those ones that are in garages that they shouldn't be sleeping in because it's very unsafe. You're missing the car. No one ever really spoke about the children and the women, and there's a lot of them. I have five today, just today, that wanted housing. How, what is going on here? I got more that want housing than say no. But I could tell you right now, my husband's retired, law enforcement, that uniform is a bit of a problem. We do not believe that officers should be doing the homeless. They need to be protecting our city, right? And yes, definitely, come when they got the machete, right? When there is a threat, threat. But to actually just go in that encampment, get, bring your nonprofits for that. That's their heart, that's what they're going to do. Let's let our officers protect the people in the positions they're, they're to be in, right? Let the nonprofits that are on the ground doing that to go into those encampments and talk to those people. Because I tell you right now, that uniform is a bit of a problem because we don't connect the dots and we got misinformation on the ground floor, and it can correct you on a lot of these things that are being said. There's a lot of miscommunication. Little Philip here, we took him in when he was 16, homeless. He'll speak. He's tried to get some of these resources. The man that, that is, just got out of surgery yesterday, he's living on the dock of Salvation Army. Explain that one. They eat out of the trash can of Salvation Army. Explain that one. Explain it. Your numbers are not coming in on the ground level, Brian. They're just not. I'm sorry. We have to figure out how to answer that. And I'm not pooing on anybody, but we have to know the facts to be able to fix it, because it's not getting better. Not. And by the way, I'm not for tents. Do not bring the homeless tents, do not give them cash, do not give them blankets, Myler blankets only, because when they get in a tent, we can't get them in a building. Don't get them comfortable. Please, we want them in a home to be safe. And now, in a tent, they get beaten, they get raped, they get beaten for that tent. Please, as a community, don't give them tents. Don't give them fabric blankets, it makes them sick. Give them the emergency blankets, they're 60 cents.
The next three speakers are Drew Fosso, Ray Blackard, Roy Blackard, and Christopher Baca.
Hi, I'm Drew Fogo. I, my handwriting's terrible, it's F-O-G-G-O. I moved to Moreno Valley in 1999. My thing I came in to want to talk about is keeping the money that Moreno Valley spends in Moreno Valley. Going to our local nonprofits, whether it's church-based or anything. Everybody talks about Salvation Army, they have a lot of services. If you look at how much money they get in down to what goes down to the street, it's tiny. It's a tiny percentage of the money that they get that they actually send out and house people. They send out and interact. They do a lot because they get a huge amount of money. But if we can put our money back into our local community, that's much better. And that's all I have. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Roy Blackard, Christopher Baca, and Bob Palomeros.
Our last item, we had Mr. Marquez make a motion, and Baca second it. Maybe we're making a little progress. I hope on this deal, we do. If you want to make a complete disaster out of everything, get the government to form a committee and do it. We don't need any committees. We don't need any more idiocracy than just went on here in the last hour and a half. My example, and I agree with you 1,000%, Dave, don't give them money. But what you're doing, what you and Mr. Ed are telling your colleague and cop, Riechel, to point a gun at us, and if we don't give you the money, you're going to put us in jail to do exactly what you're telling us not to do. All of this stuff could be fixed. Ms. Bernard, I told your colleagues at your nine-to-five down at Rivco, do you know about Prop 63 and the 27 billion that's been blown and how that got, you know, pilfered off? And we're talking about this, you can take a little success out of everything. 98.7% of this stuff is ridiculous. And again, you from the dais should be directing them, we want solutions to this. The solution, and you know it, you danced all around it or did it, most of the people out there are not accepting services. We got to fix that. Get K-9-hating Cory Jackson up here, Mr. Cabrera. Let's have a discussion. Let's put Sheriff Chad on the other stand, I'll stand in the middle of it. Let's get this, we can get this stuff solved. But you guys running this stuff, just go up Paris Boulevard and figure the $4 million that's going to make all this stuff worse that you guys are champion. Look at what's going on down at the county with the nonprofits. You ought to pay attention. It's going to get bad, and you guys are perpetuating it. Just this whole thing that's going on here, we need to fix it. If you think I do, you know, maybe I'm over the top, but I had to go over the, over the top in the last one finally to get a little sanity looking at the situation. Don't be afraid, if you're right, to stand your ground. That's what I've been talking about. Hopefully, it's finally getting through. We shall see. You don't need a committee, you need solutions. You need to have meetings here. You need to have the principals up here. You need to pass the resolutions, and you need to lobby the state of California and the Congress of the District of Criminals- You need to pass the resolutions and you need to lobby the state of California and the Congress of the District of Criminals, the President of the United States to fix this stuff. That's how it's gonna get done. Not what we just went through the last hour and a half.
The next three speakers are Christopher Baca, Bob Palomeros, followed by Louise Palomeros.
Good evening, staff again, community and elected officials. I'm here on behalf of myself. My comments are my own. And, uh, well, miss, maybe Mr. Blackard is calling for final solution. We really do need a solution. We need to find solutions for, for, you know, stuff that you're pouring so much money into, but yet it looks awful. So I'm fifty-fifty on this. On the one hand, you know, it's what you're doing and everything that's being provided is wonderful on paper and, you know, explaining it and all of that. It's great, you know, if that's what's really going on. So that's what I mean. People want to see, they want to see the results of all of this and we're not seeing it. You know, as far as the citizens of the city are concerned, you're not doing nothing for the city. The city's getting worse and worse by the day. But on the other hand, we get all this information and it's great information. You know, we, we find out people don't want the vouchers. They'd rather be out in the streets. And, uh, that's what a lot of people don't understand. They don't want the help. They're here on, uh, drug vacation from other states where they can panhandle and buy their drugs and live on the streets of California. So, you know, it's a, it's a very difficult thing for the city to do, but it looks bad. So, you know, on the one hand, yes, we do need this, uh, ad hoc, while you do need to form a policy for your task force, uh, for the community to know what's going on. So yes, we do need it. We do need the ad hoc committee. But on the other hand, more explaining and more talking and more wasted time when we don't see any results. So w- we need to see the results and we need to know what's going on. So on the one hand, yes, we need the ad hoc committee. On the other hand, it's just gonna be more, more talking heads. For instance, we have the nonprofits, Building Up Lives Foundation. That's a corrupt organization. They don't do nothing. She's up here saying she's a volunteer. No, she, she pays her rent. She pays her personal expenses out of the nonprofit. Come on. We all know that, you know, claiming she's, uh, she's helping the community. She helps herself and then the community. Now she's taking in minors. I'm sure she's getting, uh, foster care for that. So, you know, I, uh, pouring in money is just not the solution. And more talking, I don't know if it's gonna help or not, but, you know, what's going on and the reality out there are two different things.
Next three speakers are Bob Palomeros, Louise Palomeros, and Philip Rosenberg.
I was just thinking, what did we accomplish in all this conversation? You know, someone was talking about a couple, you know. It seems like the feds, the state, and the county put the weight on the city. That's what we're dealing with. You know, when it comes to couples that there's no place to take them, or maybe section eight needs to be revamped. I mean, their waiting list is, who knows, a year to five years. You know, so let, let's put the issues where they really belong. The presentation that Brian made with all of the services, you know, the task force, what more can you do? It's all there. We want to make bigger government by adding this ad hoc committee. What we need is more effective government. You know, uh, there's a lot of, Senator Alex Padilla, I was listening to him. He says, the way we're gonna take care of these problems is by enacting federal laws that cities can deal with. Because if we take all of the people that are got mental issues off the streets, we've cleaned up a lot. But if we take the one that's okay, just using drugs or the one that's just homeless, the ones that are mentally ill are still on the corners. So let's do the heavy lifting first and then we'll clean up as we go along. Uh, you know, sometimes I just feel bad for our, the task force because they deal with everything and things are still the same because they don't have the tools that they really need to take care of these problems. And the city can't do it by themselves. You know, it, we need to start pushing some of this stuff back up there to who could take care of it, you know, the county, the state, and the feds. And, uh, we'll get things done. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Louise Palomeros and Philip Rosenberg.
Give me a minute. I gotta get my breath here. Took a lot. Listening to all of these speakers talk and listening to the staff, Louise Palomeros, community activists, listening to the staff, wow, there's a lot of information there and there's a lot of resources. What we need to do is go out and educate the people that are out there and the ones that don't want services, we can't make them. Cabrera, you're on the twenty-four-hour campaign, seven days a week. Go out there and let these people know. Take it to the voter. We got two hundred-plus thousand people. Take it to the voter. See if they want a homeless encampment here. And how many beds it's gonna bring? Thirty-something plus? And it's only gonna be for a hundred and eighty days or six months after you gotta send them on their way? It's gonna cost us millions, tens of millions to get it going and millions to keep it going. I mean, are we gonna throw that burden on us, the taxpayer in Moreno Valley? Because sooner or later, it's gonna hit us in the pocket. You know, we got seventy-seven? Oh, what a coincidence, the same as last time. Oh, no. What if, so what if there's seventy-five or eighty? What's the darn difference? I mean, there's numbers out there and we got a lot of resources with the mom and the pops I said here, the Salvation Army. You can't drive, I had somebody homeless in my house. They didn't want to follow any rule in the book. What could I do? Six months later, I said, and I was willing to fly them back to where they actually came from. Pay their train ticket or their plane ticket. They didn't want to, they, they left a, a place that they had it there, their own bathroom, their own room, and they'd rather be out there because they don't want to follow a rule. You know, the statistics are there. Now Cabrera, you're so adamant in bringing this shelter here. What? For how many beds? And you're opening a pandemic box. Not pronouncing it right, but you know what I'm talking about. You know, build it, they'll come. They'll be coming from every other community here. And you know, Temecula comes and dumps them off here. They just, you know, they're, they're people. Instead of saying, what could we do? You're here in Temecula. We got resources. What could we do for you? Let's gear you in the right direction. No, they bring them over here and bring them to our city, our city. It, it's all wrong. We don't need to pour more darn money into this. We're beating a dead horse. And I don't know, Cabrera, I don't know. I'm taking it to the voter. I'm taking it to the streets. I'm gonna hit every darn parking lot in this community and forty-three schools like I did way back in the day, last year or a year and a half ago, I can do it. And let them know what you two want to do here. You know, we don't want this. We work in this community. We live in this community. We bought homes in this community. We're paying taxes in the community for what? To bring a homeless shelter? When there's so much stuff they can tap into right now, but you're not doing the, you're not educating. Educate them, educate them, educate. That's what I say. Take it to the voter. Take it to the voter. Your task force, how many votes do you need to keep it going? Well, we'll take it to the voter and let's see what they gotta say about it all. I don't think so. When I educate them, I'm gonna take it to every school, every parent that's out there parked waiting for their students and everywhere I can take it, cause this.
The final speaker is Philip Rosenberg.
Good afternoon, everyone. I don't know how everybody makes it seem so easy to talk. Anyways, um, couple points I want to reach. My first main point is I personally have been to Salvation Army. Before they knew my name, they knew what I needed, anything. They told me, I can get to the person in front of you, but I don't know if I'll be able to get to you. When I was there, I witnessed one of the volunteers drop somebody's cart full of food, pick it up off the floor and continue to give it to him. And I have pictures of this. Salvation Army is only open for a few hours a day, so it's very hard to even get to them if you need service, especially for food. On top of that, Building Up Lives did have a program for women and children to stay at. I was there for that. I, that's how they helped me. And I was there when it closed due to lack of funding. Now, despite any comments other people have, we do our best for the community. We provide what we can and we do what we can despite any limitations we have. We have places for people to go to get food. They can come to our office, get hygiene supplies, whatever they need. And we're there for help. I do what I can with cars and what knowledge I have. Now, some other stuff I want to mention is we continue to say we only have seventy-seven homeless in the city. While we probably serve that much on a daily basis, if not more, probably more, but I'm not statistical. Anyways, I, I keep hearing how we're talking about homeless, but what about the people that are on the road to being homeless? The people that can barely afford the rent. They don't have money for food. They don't have money to keep up on maintenance on their car, gas money, whatever it is. What about in a couple of months? Once they miss that first past due notice, the second one, then they're gonna be homeless. We keep talking about the homeless now, but there's a lot of people that are going to be homeless, especially with today's economy. Now, I had plenty more to say, but nerves are getting the best of me and I'm gonna leave it at that. So thank you.
Did a great job, Philip. Thank you so much.
That concludes public comment, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you to all of our public speakers as well. At this time, we'll go ahead and move into council deliberation and we have Councilmember Delgado.
Knew that was coming up, Mr. Mayor. So I just wondered, I don't have too much to talk about this because I want to make sure we focus up here on what is on the agenda. And the, what's on the agenda, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered prior to us taking a vote. And can you guys pull up that last slide to, um, to put it on? Because those are the questions that need to be answered. Now, I, if, if I may, I would like to, uh, continue this until those questions are answered because if we vote tonight for a ad hoc without those questions being answered, then I think that's gonna be counterproductive to a positive ad hoc committee. So these are the questions from staff, specific objectives, specific tasks, and so on. You, you can read it. But I, I think that if we, if we vote for an ad, to approve this ad hoc tonight and all these are not, if we vote for it tonight and approve it, it's a done deal because there's gonna be a resolution that needs to be created. If all these are not answered and the resolution's created, I think we're, we're backwards. Can you, am I right? Or, I mean?
The next steps of creating a subcommittee or committee would be, um, coming back to council with a staff report, a resolution, um, that details out all of these various things, as well as a revision to policy one point zero seven, um, naming the new subcommittee or committee. So without all of this information being detailed, staff has no ability to, uh, bring forward a resolution with the details in order to create a committee or a subcommittee.
That's my point, is that it, we can't, I think, we can't finalize a vote for this ad hoc without that first. So, or am I off base? Right? So I, my, I, I would propose, I would motion that we continue this and direct staff with your guidance, because you, you brought it up and, um, Mayor Cabrera second, answer these questions and then we come back with a full slate of, of questions that are answered from this, this list of things that they need to, in, in order to, to move forward with this.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mayor Protem Bernard.
So thank you for pointing out that this is not about a shelter. This is about a subcommittee being made. Cause I've heard several times throughout the night that this is about a shelter being built, being brought, also that it's an election year. This is something that I have been trying to do from the beginning.
Let's be respectful, please.
No, you don't have to stop her. I don't care. This is something I've been trying to do from the beginning. Because I wanted a space where we could actually get to resolutions and solutions. Because I understand that what city staff does, I appreciate what they do. I also understand that a lot of the money that we've received for our homeless care actually comes from PIT counts. And I know that I see that there's an increase. And I wanted to get to a point where we were making sure that our money was being spent correctly. We were coming up with viable solutions and a place where we could have an in-depth conversation. So it doesn't feel like every few months, our ACM has to do this big report where we can hone in on an issue or a section and just go at it. So I understand what you're saying about, um, continuing this to get down to, to, to develop this. And that, that for me, if the mayor's okay with, is not a problem because I can go home and I can work on this and I can put this together. Probably, and I know you guys probably need a little bit more time to do your staff meeting. I know, because you're giving me the look, Brian. I could probably have this done in probably another, by the next meeting. But I know you might need a little bit more time than that for a staff report because that's how serious I am about trying to get this, this, this committee moving. I am seeing homeless encampments behind schools. Where I live, there's a school and we just had to clear two homeless encampments out. I am seeing people defecating on the streets. I'm getting consistent calls. And while I understand that people are here today, sometimes the people that are in the room are not the same people that are sending emails, text messages, and other ways that they're communicating with us up here. So, um, that was my, my go-to for why I wanted to do this committee. It wasn't to, to throw more money at the wall and figure out what happens. I wanted to get to a place where we can say that we're actually doing it. Because what one resident just said was true. The residents out there and the community will tell you, we are doing absolutely nothing for homeless, even though I know we, we go out and they, my task force is out here addressing it. I know my sheriffs are out there addressing it, but I also want to take that burden off of the sheriff's department because their job is to protect and serve, not to go out here and move the homeless along, not to go out here and, and disrupt that. That's not what they signed up for. So tho- those were my concerns when I came up with this committee. And if the few residents that are here have decided that that's not what they want, that's fine. And if the voters choose not to vote for me, if I choose to run again, then that's fine also. But you'll never say I didn't do what I told everyone I was coming here to do, was address the concerns of the community.
Yeah, and if I can jump in here, I don't think I can say it any better than Mayor Protem just laid it out for all of us. She perfectly said it in her comments. And I, to, to your comments, uh, Councilmember Delgado, I, I, I'm fine with that as well, right? Kind of like your suggestion about, you know, we don't make a final decision tonight. Let me and, and Mayor Protem talk to Brian and staff about, you know, all right, what are the details of it? What's it gonna look like? Bring it back to a future council meeting and, and then have a, another discussion and a vote on it. But, you know, the alternative, if we don't form this subcommittee or ad hoc committee is a status quo. And unfortunately, the status quo just is not, it's not working. And, and there's, there's a lot more that we need to do and just some more collaboration that needs to happen and more communication. Yeah, so, so I, I, I'm perfectly fine with that, um, you know, I guess continuing it. But whatever direction we give, uh, would include allowing Mayor Protem and I and staff to talk about this and then bring something back at one of our upcoming council meetings. So I'm, I'm okay with that, perfectly fine with that. Sounds like Mayor Protem is on board with that as well. So, uh, Brian, and then I see Councilmember Marquez.
Mayor MPT, Councilmember, if that is the direction of staff tonight, all I ask is that, once that direction is given, I can only talk to the mayor and MPT. I, I don't want to buy. I can only talk to the mayor and MPT, I, I don't wanna violate any, violate any FPPC rules. So therefore, please do not ask what the status is, what's going on, how is this going? I would just rather, cuz my comment to you is, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be able to talk to you. Uh, so, I'm, I'm just kinda looking at the three, other three, just in case this decision is, uh, at the direction that you guys are currently talking. Um, and then, um, you, you know, if the direction is given, um, to allow the three of us to talk, create. Uh, a document, come back, staff report, resolution and so forth, um, that I just ask that, uh. Uh, the time be a little open, uh, for us to decide when we can actually, uh, bring this back to council.
Remember, you're one of Mayor Protem's favorites, so I don't think that'll be an issue, uh, Councilmember Marquez.
I was gonna make a comment on that too, but I, I'm just gonna leave it. Um, Brian, um, uh, I know, I know, I just can't get over that, but anyways, you're okay, Brian. No, I don't care what anybody else says up here, um, I wanna thank you for the presentation tonight, it was lengthy. Yes, I learned some things tonight, some of it I knew, but I wanna thank you anyways for refreshing that. Yes, this, we should continue this, and what I like to see is more public involvement. And I think this is what the Mayor Protem and, and the mayor want this to be, and, and I'm for it. But if we do it. And the residents don't participate, I'm gonna be a little upset because we're doing it for you guys. And, and I wanna see it through, all the way through, and not only that, the nonprofit groups. Gotta be on board too, and be available once this committee is formed, so, a- at this point, and I know it's getting late. Um, past my bedtime, but, um, I, I give you the mo- the second motion to, to, uh, continue this, thank you.
So, the motion i- i- so, the motion, my motion is to continue this. Um, allow our direct staff to meet with Mayor, Mayor Protem to answer these questions, and you guys can get into the specifics of these questions. Um, and come back at a later date, which could be April sixteenth.
Could we just say date uncertain at this point?
It, it's for you guys, yeah, for a date uncertain at this point, and, and, do I have a second?
Yeah, so, motion by Councilmember Delgado, a second by Councilmember Marquez. Uh, please call for a vote.
Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bernard?
Yes.
And Mayor Cabrera.
Yes. That motion carries unanimously as well.
And Mayor, just for a point of clarification, because I believe when Councilmember Delgado. Uh, motion to a date uncertain to work with you and you, he didn't specify that it was the mayor and MPT, I think he just looked, looked down the dais.
No, I said mayor and.
You did, okay, just wanted to make sure that it was for the record, it's the mayor and MPT, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
And Brian, don't, don't use that excuse all the time when we wanna talk to you, I can't talk to you, remember?
I won't.
That's a joke.
Well, thank you so much, uh, to, to my colleagues here, uh, I know that was a lengthy discussion, but, uh, productive, and. I think, uh, firmly believe we'll be able to make some progress, uh, as a result of this, so. Um, yeah, thank you once again, so that brings us now to the next item, which is item L. The Regional Commission and Board Reports, and we have a couple, uh, we'll go ahead and start off with Councilmember Delgado. Uh, who has two, one for the JPA and for RCTC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll, uh, provide a brief summary on the March Joint Powers Authority meeting that took place on, uh, March fourteenth. Tonight, I'm providing an update on the, uh, from the March Joint Powers Commission meeting that was held on Wednesday, March fourteenth. Um, we heard an update about the Military Compatibility Use Study, we granted Marina Valley Park LLC an extension on their exclusive negotiations. Um, for the Aviation Gateway Project at the airport. And finally, we discussed plans for a new backbone gas line infrastructure to serve. The March Life Care and Green Acres areas at the base, and that concludes my update on the last March Joint Powers Commission meeting that was held on March fourteenth. My second commission meeting was, uh, Riverside County Transportation Commission, or RCTC. Um, I'm providing updates from the meeting that was held on March thirteenth, the commission approved programming. Up to an additional thirty-five million dollars of Measure A money. Um, or MARA for the Western County Regional Arteria Funds for the City of Huropa Valley, uh, road upgrade. During the meeting, Caltrans representative briefed the commissions, uh, on the status of the potholes along I two fifteen, so. Uh, just FYI, if you're driving from Paris to Marina Valley, northbound I two fifteen, well, actually, north and south, the road is absolutely destroyed. Uh, Caltrans is aware of it, and they're coming up with a plan. Um, the maintenance crews will make efforts to repair the highway, furthermore, Caltrans District Eight is looking for emergency funds to start the highway. Highway resurfacing ASAP, and that concludes my report on the last Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting that was held on March thirteenth. And that, those are my reports.
Thank you, Councilmember, and, uh, in addition, thank you for working on that, I just wanna mention as well that. Um, uh, Mayor Locke Dawson, uh, Mayor Vargas and I also sent a joint letter, uh, to Caltrans. About those same exact concerns, so, team effort here, and hopefully soon we'll get some, uh, something addressed on that two fifteen. Uh, next up, we have RTA for Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor, tonight I'm providing an update from RTA Board Administration Committee on March sixth. The committee had a presentation on the current retired vehicle transfer policy, and approved the authorization of staff to add. Eight more applicants to the list, um, and these go to nonprofit groups that, um, they have to turn in application. If they, um, if they want a, um, a bus, or a small bus, um. RTA does provide those vehicles when they're retired to these groups, so, if you're a nonprofit and you need a bus. Uh, or a smaller bus, um, you could fill out an application with RTA, that includes my, um, my report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I think that's all the regional reports for tonight, next up is item M, the Employee Association Report. We don't have any tonight, and that brings us to the famous City Managers Report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Member City Council, so, uh, just two items tonight, first is, um, another award for the city, so, the City of Marina Valley, we just received. Award from the League of California Cities, uh, this is a Tapa Award, uh, given to Public Works Department, and this is for our pavement rehab. Rehab- rehab- rehabilitation program, uh, and this is actually, you know, when we started this program, this is actually. Fifty million dollars in which we, uh, received from the, the ARPA money from the federal government. And we're able to pave a hundred ninety miles of road through Marina Valley, and we were able to condense ten years of road payment with eighteen month. And when we started this, this project, you know, we challenged our Public Works team to see what we could do in eighteen month, and it was a, a lot of coordinated effort. And to do ten years of work in eighteen month, and the council didn't stop there, and after we finished the work, the recent budget, you also put another twenty million dollars to. Invest into our roads, so thank you, uh, council for your support, and also, this is a fantastic, uh, recognition for the city from the League of California City. Also, another award, uh, this is actually, uh, a national award, this is actually from the Crown Communities Award by American Cities and County. And this is for our, um, Juan Batista De Anza Trail Project, and this project was actually funded by grant. Uh, the initial project was ten million dollars in which, uh, we did a, a dedication about a couple of years ago, and this second segment is actually. Another ten million dollar grant in which we just, uh, were getting very close to finish, and the, the trail segment is actually very interesting because this actually. Segment is from the mall all the way to Iris Plaza, and with the previous segment that was, um, that was finished. Connected from Iris Avenue to actually the entrance of Lake Paris, so right now, this whole trail system, uh, transfers the city. Uh, going through the California Aqueducts and, uh, and, uh, pretty much grant funded, and we actually won the award from this national organization. Uh, because they recognize us for really our achievement and really, um, uh, looking at groundbreaking accomplishment. On something just kinda thinking out, outside the box, so, once again, this is a public works department, coordinating with our finance department, it's a team effort getting this, uh, award done. So, once again, congratulations to the city, but, uh, congratulations to the council for supporting these very, very, uh, fantastic projects for our city. And that concludes the City Manager's Report tonight.
Yes, round of applause, that deserves a round of applause. I would mention the shelves and all that, but I think that, that joke is old already, well done, City Manager. Uh, alrighty, so, City Council, closing comments, I'm slurring my words too, it's late. Um, we'll go ahead and start off with, uh, Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Thank you, I'll be quick, um, I wanted to say that we had a wonderful multicultural festival. Um, last weekend, it was, um, greatly attended, lots of residents, uh, coming in and. Sharing their dance, their performances, booths, it was, um, community gardens, art. Um, opportunities, it was a great day to be in Marina Valley, so, thank you to everyone that came out, and those of you that missed it, you always have next year. Um, we do have some upcoming events that I'd like to inter, um, invite the residents to. We have this coming weekend, Springtastic in District One at Sunnymead Park, that's for the kids. From two to four at nine AM, five to eight-year-olds, special needs children at nine thirty, the nine to twelve-year-olds could come out at ten AM. If you're a little bit older, you'll have to wait another week, uh, but we'll be having a glowing crazy egg hunt here in District One for the teens. That will be ages eleven through seventeen at the Dr. Carla Thorne Teen Center here at the CRC. We also have an event for the adults, I'll let D four talk about that one since it's over there, and finally, I will be having a public engagement. April fourth at six PM, at the Day Street Cupcake and Espresso Bar. And as, uh, mentioned before by one of our residents at the podium, this Thursday is World, um, Down Syndrome Day. So, make sure to wear your pins to recognize this event, so, that'll be, um, the end of my comments, thank you.
Thank you, next up, closing comments from Councilmember Marquez.
I'll make this quick also, I attended the volunteer, sheriff, sheriff volunteer, um, luncheon, or dinner, fantastic. Can't believe that, well, I could believe it now, but all these youth that dedicate their, their time. To the police department to serve the city, it's unbelievable, and, and I know that we have a couple of deputies here that, uh, had a part to do with it. Fantastic event, fantastic, and, and I'm, I'm glad to see that, uh, uh, just. Brings a lot to me, when I was a policeman, and we didn't have this in our department, but seeing it here, it's unbelievable, again, thank you, thank you. The construction going on in Alessandro and, and LaSalle, there's a lot of construction going on there in District Three. I wasn't aware that, um. They all three, well, three of the four corners are being, um, worked on, infrastructure, the curves are being, um, put up. There's a lot of construction out there, uh, I was out there a couple of days ago, I stopped, of course, of blinking red lights. People aren't even slowing down, they're just going right through, be careful out there, and, and, you know, these construction guys, they. Their, their life's in danger when, when that happens, so please, to the residents in District Three, or all the residents. Be careful when there's construction zones, and with that, I wanna say, um, all the presentations tonight, thank you. And, um, everybody have a good evening, whatever's left of it, we'll see you next time, thank you.
Thank you, next up, closing comments from Councilmember Delgado.
Brian, can you go over that, those slides again? So, I just. I, I actually just wanna let everybody know that there is an encampment being developed at the, the westbound. Uh, sixty Paris off-ramp, and we made contact with Caltrans today cuz that's their area, but, um. I'm gonna stay on them because we may need to, uh, assist them in many ways, but, uh, two days ago, there was three, now there's four. So, I think that they're, they're gathering up there, I don't know, Melissa, that you've been getting calls?
And, um, I was at Sizzler today when, uh, PD rolled up on them, and also, CHP was also there.
Awesome, so maybe they're.
So, they, they're working on it, but they did come down from the freeway, uh, underneath the, the freeway there on Paris. And that's where, the last I seen them, so.
They're, hopefully we can get.
On it, yeah.
Okay, good, um, I attended the Rain Cross Awards at the base, um, and the Rain Cross Awards were eighteen different reserve bases throughout the nation. Um, and our four fifty-second hosted it, and there was, uh, a bunch of winners, it was, uh, really cool to see. And be part of the, the military here in, uh, the city of Marina Valley. Um, and then, speaking of that, I attended Saturday, uh, the Change of Command, so now we have a new commander at the base, uh. Uh, Colonel Bailey, and I asked the Lieutenant Colonel of the Security Forces to come here. And give a briefing on the relationship between RSO, our Riverside Sheriff's Office, and the base security forces. So, he's gonna come and, uh, put a presentation together real quick to address, or to kinda brief us on what we're doing to keep the bases secure. And working with the city, um, and I, I did have the Springtastic and the Egg Hunt on my list, but you covered that very well, so thank you very much. And one thing I will say, well, there's, the school year is winding down, we have crossing guards in your districts and everybody's districts, and for the public. Uh, the crossing guards are very important, they keep our kids safe, uh, but more importantly, or just as important as them is your, the teachers, your, your kids' teachers. Um, talking to teachers, they're doing, um, uh, conferences right now, and the conferences are very stressful, so. Please thank your teachers, bring them an apple, I don't know if they still do that, but, uh, bring them an apple or Starbucks card, that's probably more appropriate. Um, an apple card, there you go, get it, I get it, apple card, so, uh, one of those. Um, and I'm sure the teachers will appreciate it, and, and the teachers will appreciate us thanking them as parents, so, um. And then, just be kind to one another, I, I say it every week, or every other week, uh, it's not that hard, and you will see, right, Julianne? It's not, Philip, it's not that hard, right? Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, and we now, uh, go to Mayor Protem Bernard.
Um, so, I, too, attended, attended the multicultural festival, it was really good, a nice time was had, um. We had the Valverde Art, um, students there, and they actually made this bracelet for me, cuz I was like, yeah, I'm not talented enough. I actually had another vendor there that made bracelets and did permanent jewelry, um, so I'm probably gonna get that, yeah. Mm-hmm, permanent jewelry, they, they, yeah, you can't take it off, only she can, I'll explain it later, um. Um, so, it was nice, it was well attended, it was, it was a lot of fun, and I will say this before it gets out there, yes, I did win a four-pack of tickets to Disneyland. And no, it was not thrown on by the city staff, it was by a local radio station, so I am putting that out there, so nobody may. Yeah, and I signed, and I signed the form reporting that I got it, so.
Are you taking Brian with you?
Yes, they were raffling, right. I am, probably.
Your mom invited me to go.
I'm probably gonna take Brian, I'll swap him out for my husband. Somebody's gotta help watch for kids.
Your mom's, so, your mom said the kids were gonna stay home and I could go.
Yeah, so that was, that was fun, um, also, we do have the adult flashlight, um, the adult flashlight egg scramble. Um, this Saturday at six thirty at LaSalle Sports Park, um, bring your knee pads, please be safe. Don't forget to put your flashlights on, on your, your beanies, do not actually carry a flashlight cuz it will not save you. And, um, as the, as the resident was talking about earlier, it is sept- I'm sorry, March twenty-first is. Down, World's Down Syndrome Day, and so, um, if you would like to participate, that is the day where, one way to participate is to wear mismatch socks. So, um, I'm just gonna echo what Councilmember Delgado said, which is, be kind, be nice. I know it's getting to the end of the year, and so, kids are getting rowdy, teachers are getting restless, and spring break is here next week.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and I won't repeat, uh, all the events, we hope to see you there. Uh, please, for the egg scramble, please wait until the event starts, do not rush the field, please, 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 I'm sure we have contingency plans in place. But, uh, uh, that's a fun one, so hats off to Parks and everybody that puts that together. Um, Marina Valley Mall, just wanna mention, uh, the library that we have there, uh, exciting update, actually, in District One. Um, that, that Marina Valley Mall library is gonna get some upgrades in the near future, which is really exciting. Uh, some of that includes, and that was actually through a grant that we got from the state, uh, through the library, um, agency, or the library. Department at the state level, uh, so, there's gonna be some technological upgrades, uh, which is really exciting, so, look forward to seeing that at the mall. Also, um, the primary elections are just about over with, I know there's still some votes to be counted. We'll see what happens with Prop One, I know that there's some, it's really, really close, so we'll see, uh, what happens with that, but. Uh, just congratulations to all those who either won outright, or made it out and are moving on to the general election. I know there's a few new council members coming into the city of Riverside, and a few other positions that actually will represent Marina. few other positions that actually will represent Marina Valley as well, so just congratulations to everybody that made it out of the primary election. I was also able to attend, thanks to the US Conference of Mayors, I was able to attend the Civic IO Summit in Texas. I appreciate Mayor Protem for taking the lead on the multicultural festival, apologies, I couldn't be there, I really wanted to, but in a nutshell, that Civic IO Summit, and the reason why, it was a last-minute thing, I was on a waitlist, and they told me that I was able to go, they, as the US Conference of Mayors, so it was really focused on technology, emerging technologies, like artificial intelligence and things like that. And it's actually the first time that I saw an autonomous delivery robot, a little white box with four wheels, making its way through the crowd, delivering food, so I thought that was really interesting, just to, like, it feels like we're in, I was in the future, you know? It feels really surreal, so I appreciate the US Conference of Mayors for letting me join them for that. I was also able to attend the United Way Gala last Friday, and that was just a, you know, celebration of the work that they've done, their CEO Kimberly Stars and their entire team, that they've been able to work really hard. We've partnered with them for rental assistance programs and things like that, so hats off to United Way and all the work that they're doing. And last but not least, just want to wish everybody a happy early Easter, for everybody that celebrates. Our next meeting isn't until after Easter, so happy early Easter to everyone. And with that, we'll go ahead and conclude and adjourn our meeting at 10:02 p.m. Have a good night.